Good morning, everyone. It is 10 o'clock. I will call this Board of Accounting Commissioners meeting to order, and I would like to ask Claire Novak to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Together we say, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, if you'll help us with the roll call.
Of course. Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman, Vice Chair.
Here.
Mike Clark.
President.
Marius Garcia on the phone. Clara Andreola.
President.
Eric Brown, County Manager.
Here.
And District Attorney Mary Canderas.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galison, Your County Clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Just really quick on the technical side. Dustin, can Commissioner Garcia hear us? Or Commissioner Garcia, can you speak up if you can hear us, please? Well, we'll work on that. Okay. Commissioner Garcia, do you hear us?
I do. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Great. Thank you. All right. We will now move into Item Three, Public Comment. Mr. Manager.
Item Three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole, and virtual public comment is eligible when facilities are available.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
We have a very long list of public commenters, so the second name, please queue up. First up, we have Tammy Freeman, followed by Bill Miller.
All right. My name is Tammy Freeman. I'm a dog owner and have enjoyed a long history of visiting Rancho San Rafael Park. I worked at the Great Basin Adventure and the Wilbur D. May Museum while I was in college in the early 90s. My wedding reception was held at the museum 28 years ago. We've had countless family photos taken at the park and made many happy memories taking our children to the balloon races when they were young. We have frequented the dog park on numerous occasions. Unfortunately, the park is too dangerous to visit now. As reported in the Reno Gazette Journal, James Carr-
No, sir. Sir, please do not disrupt the public comment. Continue on.
As reported in the Reno Gazette Journal, James Carr shot Riva a Wartweiler four times during a minor dogfight on March 17th, 2024, at the dog park at Rancho San Rafael Park. Riva's owner, Trish Lint, was traveling through Reno on her way to Elko when she stopped at Rancho to let her dogs have a break when the shooting occurred. It was reported in the Reno Gazette Journal that a Sheriff's Department spokesperson told reporter Mark Robeson that the reason James Carr has not been charged is that while county code does prohibit the discharge of any weapon in a county park, there is an exception to any person lawfully discharging a firearm in protection of life or property. I found the county code, but it only includes the language in the first part of the statement that is attributed to the Sheriff's Department spokesperson. Chapter 95, Parks and Recreation, 95.280, Firearms. It has three components. First is no discharge of a weapon in county parks. Two, exception for county-operated shooting ranges and archery parks. And three, that the park ranger can set their own rules in the park that they manage regarding firearms. The statement that there is an exception to any person lawfully discharging a firearm in protection of life or property is not in Code 95.280 or elsewhere in the county code. 95.500, Penalties, Criminal. Except as otherwise provided by law, any person violating any of the provisions of this chapter is guilty of a misdemeanor. I am outraged that the shooter has not been held criminally responsible for his actions. As more information has come out, including photos, it is clear that neither James Carr nor his dog were in sufficient danger to warrant the brutal and unnecessary killing of Miss Lint's dog, Riva. Based on the statement of the spokesperson, the Sheriff's Department relied on the county code in their decision to not charge Mr. Carr. Therefore, my request is that the County Commission add a section to Code 95.280 or 95.500 that affirmatively states there are no exceptions to the discharge of a firearm in any park in Washoe County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Miller, followed by Rabbi Benjamin Zober. And I see Mr. Miller has documents. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hill, Commissioners, staff, fellow citizens. I'm Bill Miller, climatier and resident, once again here representing the climate of our fair county. Today, my focus will be on how we might effectively use green thinking to help solve the unhoused problem. But first, since unhoused people are not abstract problems, I'd like to personalize our discussion with a verse from the Gospel of the Band quoting the prophet Robbie Robertson in Track Three, Verses Four and Five. "I just spent sixty days in the jailhouse for the crime of having no dough. Now here I am back out on the street for the crime of having nowhere to go. Save your neck, save your brother. Seems like it's one or the other. Oh, the shape I'm in." Indeed not. While we may think we are solidly middle-class or better, just a few unfortunate incidents can strip away that conceit very quickly. I know. I've been there. Criminalizing misfortune or its shadow, mental illness, solves nothing. You can't punish people into prosperity. And banishing the unhoused to the outskirts so their abject misery doesn't offend your sensibilities is a fool's errand. They keep coming back. So if for no other reason than pure practicality, creating housing and even offering services to those deemed unworthy, bringing them in rather than driving them away, where they never stay away, might actually solve the problem. And in the process, might actually save the taxpayers' money. So if we're willing to entertain fact-based ideas, then creating affordable housing communities, even tiny housing communities, makes sense. And if so, why not increase taxpayer savings by installing rooftop solar panels, solar water heating, all-electric appliances, and no toxic natural gas lines? Even better, with these communities, the county can efficiently offer services to help these people put their broken lives back together. Seems like a win-win. Helps people, saves money, protects our environment, creates a new model of community. When all else fails, maybe it's time to consider something new that might actually work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rabbi Benjamin Zober, followed by Reverend Claire Novak. And I do have a document to distribute for Mr. Zober.
Good morning, Commission Chair Hill and Commissioners. I suppose this is looking like a joke with rabbi and priests in front of you, but in all seriousness, we're here with what is a serious and important mission. And what I wanted to say was to first, I hope that you will read the words that we have put together as a broad coalition of faith leaders and clergy on the proposed ordinance about camping in the county. I wanted to highlight something that has been a bit of debate and even speaks to why we are here, that we are not politicians. We are clergy, and it is our duty to be moral leaders. And we are of various faiths, but united in our moral vision, often taking cues from our religious texts, which are, in truth, political documents that guide us into how we build an ideal society. And the work of that building is inspired by those values and carried out by people in positions of power and privilege. And it is not an easy one, and we do not envy you your tasks. And in fact, we applaud the efforts that you've given and the compassion and the care that you have. And even in this issue, we know that it has undergone a number of revisions, and we hope that it continues to. Because we believe that we are all united in this idea that each person has a safe place to live and is able to have security and has the tools they need to prosper and thrive. And unfortunately, as this proposed ordinance stands, it is not there yet. It is still punitive to people who are already suffering. It is still creating problems where we had all hoped it would find solutions. And so we hope that instead of passing this ordinance, you will continue the wonderful and the important work that you've done, finding a way to make sure that each and every person in this county is cared for, is given the opportunity and the possibilities to succeed, and that we see swiftly and in our daze a community and a world that resembles what our moral vision demands it look like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Claire Novak. And I see documents here, followed by Eileen Bidwell.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Reverend Claire Novak with United for Action and Faith in Action Nevada. You've heard me speak like a lawyer about all the flaws in the Sheriff's illegal camping ordinance. These flaws are deep and damaging. In fact, on April 22nd, the U.S. Supreme Court will hear arguments about whether ordinances like this one are unconstitutional. We are strongly convinced they are and have sent you our case by email. But today, I speak to you not like a lawyer, but as a minister, from the heart. And I ask you to listen with your hearts. Listen for the wisdom that's inside you. You know what the problem is. It's not individuals, people struggling to survive on the streets, in their cars, or anywhere they can find some shelter, neighbors who have been struck by misfortune and lost their homes, left outside. Homelessness is not an individual problem, and you know we can't solve it by pursuing and punishing individuals. We can't arrest our way out of a housing crisis. Well, your intellect tells you that's foolish, and your heart tells you that's cruel. You know what the problem is. It's a systemic failure, and you adopted a regional homeless plan in January 2022 with the primary goal of leading the community to, quote, "build a system that is capable of housing people experiencing homelessness so that it's rare, brief, and nonrecurring." This plan, which I copied for you again today, shows both common sense and compassion to change lives, not create criminals. I say as a minister, you know what the problem is. Follow your plan. Empower experts in housing and homelessness, not law enforcement. Increase needed services and shelter options as pathways to permanent housing. Reach for the highest and best solutions. And above all, listen to your hearts. This ordinance does not deserve your vote. Amen.
Eileen Bidwell, followed by Aspen Nay.
I'm Eileen Bidwell. I'm a resident of District One. I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed anti-camping policy. I also want to say that if this board decides to support this impractical and repressive law, I urge the Commissioners to, at the very least, create alternatives, safe spaces where people without stable homes can sleep. Our community can create more safe and legal camping areas and establish a safe and legal parking program for our neighbors who use their vehicles as homes. Many who live in RVs cannot stay in RV and mobile home parks because these parks prohibit older vehicles and their vehicles are too old. It's important to understand that RV residents are not unhoused. They have homes, and many have spent their entire savings to buy them. They simply need a safe and legal place to park their homes. In fact, RVs actually add to our local supply of affordable housing. Many communities throughout the Western U.S. have created successful, safe, and legal parking programs for cars, vans, trucks, and RVs used as homes, and we can do the same in Reno. Several years ago, I did some research on programs in California and Oregon and spoke with staff that operate them. Commissioner Hill, I live in your district, and I'm on your mailing list, and I am happy to volunteer to help plan a successful program here. I'm asking this board to use its influence to end the needless confiscation of people's homes and belongings because there is no legal place to park. Many of my advocate friends point out the obvious fact that these anti-camping policies criminalize poverty. I would add that it is not only folks living in poverty who experience housing instability, but also middle-income working people, college students, and retired seniors living on fixed incomes who were doing fine three years ago but can no longer afford the cost of housing in Washoe County. Our friends, our family members, our neighbors. Homelessness can happen to anyone. Homelessness affects not only neighbors who are experiencing it. It affects the health and well-being of our entire community. Homelessness is clearly and simply a housing problem. I believe with all my heart that it can be solved. Passing laws like the one being considered today will only prolong homelessness, offering no attempt to solve this problem. Our time and energy can instead be used to create solutions that contribute to the health and well-being of our community by providing safe, healthy, accessible, and affordable homes for everyone. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Aspen Nay, followed by Lisa Lee.
Good morning, Madam Chair and County Commissioners. My name is Aspen Nay, but I go by Alex, and I'm a resident of District Five and a first-time voter this year. I'm here today to discuss the ordinance that would make it illegal to sleep in sidewalks and cars or RVs and in tents. I believe this would be counterintuitive to the issue of homelessness, as taking away access to shelter does not solve the problem. Access to the CARES campus is not always a guarantee, and I find it important that our brothers and sisters outside have dry places to live and sleep, especially during the winter months when the weather can be harsh and unpredictable. The issue of homelessness is not solved in jails or in sweeps or with ordinances like this one that make homelessness inherently more dangerous. This ordinance would put people's lives at risk by limiting their access to reliable and sometimes preferable shelter from the elements in a region where temperatures can become extreme and deadly. In addition, people are not service-resistant for not wanting to go to a FEMA shelter. Oops. No matter how many millions of dollars you sink into it, if we want to get people off the streets, the services we provide need to be of a quality suitable for these people to thrive long-term. For example, if you were to be hungry and I offered you feces between two pieces of bread, you would not be service-resistant or hungry by choice if you were to refuse my offer. Our community members on the streets deserve access to quality, affordable housing, and the CARES campus does not fit in that category. There has to be another option for people living in RVs and vehicles specifically. There is often no place to park. You can't access an RV park unless you are in a newer RV or camper. You are only allowed two bags at the shelter, so what do you do with all your belongings, in your car or RV or camper, all the remnants of a life you used to live? Do you just dispose of your past and cram what you can in two bags to live in a warehouse full of people? What's the exit plan? Where will you go afterward? Wasn't your car or RV or camper your housing? I'm only 17, but I have questions. I hope you all do, too. I also believe people deserve better. I hope you all do, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Lee, followed by Terry Brooks.
Good morning, Madam Chair and County Commissioners. My name is Lisa Lee, and I'm a resident of Vice Chair Herman's District Five. As a person with lived experience and as a public health professional, I'm here today speaking in opposition to Agenda Item 11, which seems to further criminalize poverty. As Chief Deputy Sol Farino said on February 21st, "We cannot arrest our way out of this problem." While I understand the intentions of unified regional approach to address homelessness, these reactionary ordinances do indeed criminalize housing instability. Tactics that seek to coerce individuals into sheltering at the CARES campus are ineffective and a further waste of tax dollars, which has perpetuated, not ended, homelessness. The experience of homelessness for hundreds of individuals in our region. According to my analysis, we have 62 full-time outreach workers in the region, 62. If the services offered fail to meet the needs of the people, it is not the people who have failed, it's the programs. I urge you to reconsider using the term "service-resistant." Regarding individual liberties, this ordinance seems to violate people's Fourth Amendment protections under the Constitution, which safeguard citizens from unreasonable government intrusion, including people sheltering in their cars, RVs, and living rough. Additionally, it appears to violate the Eighth Amendment, which prohibits excessive fines and cruel and unusual punishment for activities such as sleeping in a tent, shelter, or vehicle when appropriate, shelter space is not available. The lack of affordable housing has been challenging, not just here, but across the U.S., as many people and families have been struggling to meet their basic needs. While I agree that people who have run out of options and are living in public spaces can present a public health issue, we need to have public health solutions. Housing is healthcare. There are opportunities to explore such as safe parking equipped with a community kitchen, restrooms, and showers, think campground with amenities, and more low-income and affordable housing. It is housing, not warehousing, that ends homelessness, as well as an earnest desire to care for our brothers and sisters. It's great to see 120 units of affordable housing elsewhere on the agenda. The Sheriff's Office has been a leader of innovation in our community, and I applaud the innovative programs they have embraced. But let's come together and develop collaborative, innovative solutions. In the words of Micah Edmison, "You cannot love your neighbor while supporting or accepting systems that crush, exploit, and dehumanize them. You cannot love your neighbor while accepting less for them and their family than you do for your own." Let's work together to ensure that more people are getting into supportive housing, and let's shift our mindset from housing to housing, not handcuffs.
Thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by Rick Hilton.
It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today, I'd like to address adapting to losing your home in a case of homelessness. I've lived in different places, and every time I move, I try to make my new habitat into something that I approve. Once I've been living there for just a few days, then I suddenly find myself getting set in my ways. Since I was a kid living with my parents and adapting to their rules, I have never had to adapt to anyone else's rules. So if I found myself homeless and then found someplace to stay, I would probably adapt to it in my own personal way. No matter where it was, as long as I approve, I might then be a little reluctant to move. A lot of homeless people who are scattered around town may have such a reason for where they've settled down. Once they have adapted to the place where they stay, they consider it their home, and they may not want to go away. If they're staying in a place where there are no rules, they may not want to go somewhere where they'd have to follow rules. But if that other place was a safer place to stay, then that might be a place where they might want to stay. If that other place was a place that offered good food, then the chance of going there would certainly change my attitude. That would make that place a much better place to stay, and I know that I'd go there and do so without delay. So I'd like to thank Washoe County for such places they provide, places where many homeless people found better to reside. And I'd like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back because I've got a lot more to say.
Beautiful poems, Mr. Brooks. Thank you.
Rick Hilton, followed by Rachel Rikaski.
Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak, and I have a crazy idea. Why don't we issue permits? Why don't we make it a permitted activity to live in a designated area of one of our parks, to park there legally for up to six months, to give the person the opportunity to get back on their feet with free rent? It's very easy to fall into homelessness, and it's a hell of a thing to get out of it. The thing most lacking is stability, a place to put your things, to put your head, and to get your thoughts together. For the county, that would mean a registry of the homeless, how to contact them, where they are and their progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Rikaski, followed by David Jennings.
I wasn't planning on speaking today because I was going to bring three of my friends who are homeless to do the speaking themselves. Unfortunately, their camp is being swept away today, and they didn't have the opportunity to get away. They had to pack up what they could and move it to another place where they will probably be swept away again because there is no other option for them when they have to exist somewhere and they don't want to exist in a shelter where they would still have to cart all their stuff around all day anyway. This is such a vicious cycle, and it needs to end. Criminalizing poverty is not going to help anybody. I understand business owners and homeowners not wanting to see homeless people and their stuff, but nobody wants to be warehoused like they are an Amazon product. And the shelter is just not a good option for a great deal of these people. You need to be providing housing, not handcuffs, as they say. Provide dumpsters for them to put their trash in so they don't have to throw it on the street. Provide outhouses for them to go to the bathroom so they don't have to do that in the river. Just provide them what they need to live and be just human beings with dignity and the chance to just live their lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Jennings, followed by Elise Weatherly. David Jennings.
I'm David Jennings, a retired sergeant in police from Oakland, California. The Housing and Homeless Services, as of March 22nd, estimated there were 2,060 so and homeless in the area at present. If you take all the CARES shelter bids, Gospel Mission, and the other agencies around providing one-night housing, it's only a fraction, 25%, 30% of the beds for the vast number of the homeless. U.S. has the highest prison population in the world, and sadly, the recidivist rate is the highest in the world also, at 76.6% people return. So our lock 'em up mentality is not working at any level.
So our lock 'em up mentality is not working at any level. In the draft of the ordinance, Section 425.1, the policy states, quote, "Experiencing homelessness is not a crime and members of this office will not experience homelessness solely as a basis for detention or law enforcement action." End of quote. Then, there's the WWC 50.4 to WWC 90.4 is all the things that are evidence of homelessness. And each one of those is a misdemeanor. So a misdemeanor is a crime. So homelessness is a crime by this ordinance. There's no way around that. And then it says in 425.1B, "Services," quote, "services will be provided to the extent necessary to provide housing options for the homeless." We know, we've just stated, that there are not near enough options, or any options, for the majority of the homeless. So that's pointless. The people are homeless, that's why they're on the street. If they had a home, they wouldn't be. 425.4 says, an interesting word phrase, "Services necessary will be provided so that the homeless may properly thrive." They make this sound like it's a holiday camping trip. Homelessness and properly thriving do not have anything at common.
Elise Weatherly, followed by Rosie Zuckerman.
Hi, Elise Weatherly. It's good to see you guys. I will say that people have come up to me recently and go, "We're sorry you're not feeling well." And I went, "No, actually, I made a commitment to that." When I was scheduled to die in 2015, I was kept alive for a reason. And it wasn't for myself, it wasn't for me to feel better, but really was about others. So I decided to, I talked to God, because he actually listens to me, don't ask me why. And I said, "I would rather be sick than gloat when my enemies fall." How do I know I'm not supposed to gloat when my enemies fall? Because Paul the Jew told me. The Word of God was entrusted to the Jews and so I take it seriously. Do you know how many times I've gasped in horror when I found out, "Uh-oh, I need to change my mindset." So I want to go into the whole thing today about money. This is about money. I gave away millions and millions and millions of dollars to the IRS and to Social Security while people would complain in the background and rip into pieces. And then later on, I go, "Wait a minute, they're faithful. They do their work, they do their jobs on time, they're unbiased, they do what they're supposed to do." So then I thought about, "Well, what about county commissioners that make you a false and empty promise? What do I do about that?" Well, I turn it over to God, because I can't fix it. But if we've got bullies in our midst, and let's just say they're HOA people, and we don't do anything about it, then does God approve of that? Well, did he approve of the Christians in Hitler's time standing back and singing as loud as they could to drown out the sounds of the Jews being taken by the train cars? No, he didn't. He didn't approve of that. Also, when I first came here, I left a wealthy Weatherly, alright? I just knew I couldn't stick around with them anymore and people were generous to me. They wanted to help me, they wanted to give to me and I went, I even knew then that if I don't work, I don't eat. It's a scripture that I wasn't even aware of, but I knew I had to work and it turned out to be for the benefit of others. Also, as far as public comments go, I recant my prior complaint about opening public comments because by the time you guys get to your agenda, you're probably worn out, alright? I think maybe there should be a public comment special service, right? Where we can talk about stuff like that, but by this time, we're tired. And back to, let's see, what was I going to say? Why do I trust God's Word? Because I put it to the test? Why did I put it to the test? Because that's how I am? How do I know that it was translated correctly? Because of Miles Coverdale and William Tindale? Did you know that Miles Coverdale is the ancestor of David Coverdale from Whitesnake? And it turns out that they're the same kind of people. You can trust them. I trust you.
Thank you. Rosie Zuckerman, followed by Matthew Wilke.
Good morning. My name is Rosie Zuckerman and I'm here today to voice my opposition to Item 11. Many of us have been here before, asking the same thing over and over again. We are not fooled by euphemistic language. An ordinance like this is inhumane and specifically targets the poor and the homeless. It will not solve the issue of poverty or the lack of affordable housing. An ordinance like this will instead exacerbate a regional crisis. We need comprehensive approaches, not punitive measures. We are watching you, we are paying attention, and we are asking that you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Wilke, followed by Aspen Marillo.
Good morning, Chair Hill and members of the Commission. My name is Matthew Wilke, for the record, and I am here to oppose Agenda Item 11 and the criminalization of homelessness and the act of penalizing individuals for sleeping in their cars. As a community, we should support, we should prioritize compassion and support for those experiencing houselessness rather than punitive measures that only exacerbate their struggles. Investing in services such as mental health support, addiction treatment, job training, and affordable housing initiatives are far more effective in addressing the root cause of houselessness. Rather than forcing individuals into the usually overcrowded CARES campus shelters or threatening them with legal consequences, we should focus on providing long-term solutions and empowering people to rebuild their lives with dignity and respect. Coursing individuals to either the crowded and overfilled CARES campus or jail puts many of their livelihoods at risk. Many of these individuals have jobs and sleep in their vehicles. If they lose their vehicles or if they're faced with legal precautions for sleeping in their cars, this not only threatens the little bit of economic stability that they may have, but also jeopardizes their overall well-being and sense of security. Instead of criminalizing houselessness, we need to work together to further create a community that values every individual's right to safe and stable housing. By further investing in comprehensive supportive services, we can help individuals transition out of houselessness and regain independence. Let us not forget that behind every statistic and behind every policy decision in these chambers is our real people with stories, dreams, and struggles. I urge the Commission to reconsider the ordinance today that would further marginalize these individuals. Let us choose empathy over fear, understanding over misconception, and proactive solutions over punitive actions. Together, we can build a more inclusive and compassionate community where everyone can thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Aspen Marillo, followed by Jackie Riley.
Good morning. My name is Aspen. I live in District One and I work in District Three, all on stolen land. And I talked to this board last hearing with this ordinance and brought up some concerns about the language and about how this extends more power to the law enforcement. It doesn't actually mention homelessness, it mentions pollution on the river. Since then, I have gone to a few events that are organized by River Justice, which is an Indigenous-run program that is actually doing river cleanups and they have said that this ordinance does not help their mission. It does not protect the river like it claims and a bigger help would be to expand waste management services out there. Another thing I want to bring up is what else this board and what else this commission, these y'all are doing about homelessness besides this ordinance? And the Community Homelessness Advisory Board has not met since September 2023 and there are no current meetings scheduled, which I think is concerning. But my opposition to this ordinance remains the same. I work in victim services. And one of the women and children shelters has just quit answering the phone because they are full and they have people that constantly are outside waiting for a space to open up. And that makes it harder for us to give services because we are not, we deal with other community issues, but we don't have anywhere to outlet clients who come in who are also suffering from homelessness. This ordinance is made with the perfect victim in mind, many of which I've had in my office that are wanting shelter and are willing to go to the shelter and there is simply no room in the shelter, not to mention the security and safety issues within CARES campus and the other shelters in Washoe County. And I just want to point out that also we have lost about four different low-barrier, low-income housing within the city of Reno to be replaced with vacant lots. So I urge you to vote in opposition to this ordinance and to demand more clear ways of how this is actually going to solve the problem rather than push people out until they're no longer Washoe County's problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Riley, followed by Wyatt Omar.
Good morning. My name is Jackie Riley and I'm the president of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Northern Nevada. We're in District One and I also live in District One. I am a third-generation lifelong Nevadan and I am in opposition to ordinance, the ordinance on the unhoused. I've been awake all night thinking about this. I just, it's, I don't understand why we're criminalizing being unhoused. I've worked with the Reno Posse for the last seven years where we fed our unhoused neighbors once a week, for, as I said, I think for seven years. Homelessness is a complex issue. Why are we arresting people for being unhoused? I don't understand it. I do find myself wondering if, like in the past, and maybe still in some states, where prisons were run by profit-making companies, they were getting money for every bed that was filled, so people were kept in prison longer than they needed to be so that that company could make money? Is our county jail getting money for the beds when the unhoused are in there? So it makes me wonder if that's the purpose behind this in terms of arresting people for being unhoused. Why can't you sleep in your car? My trainer goes out and takes a nap in his car quite often. Why is that illegal? And why are we fining people five hundred dollars if they don't have money to begin with to have housing? Where do they come up with the money for that? I think there are, as a taxpayer for, gosh, probably the last fifty years, I think there's better use for our tax dollars, better ways to spend our tax dollars. As has already been said, the CARES campus doesn't meet the need. I thought there were sixteen hundred unhoused. We heard today that there's twenty-six hundred unhoused. So please just don't support this. I don't understand how you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Wyatt Omar, followed by Paula Pennington.
Good morning. I'm Wyatt Omar. I go to Monilka. I'm fifteen. I don't see why criminalizing is helping the homeless people. If you guys do that, then they can't get jobs and it makes it harder for them to live their life because they can't get shelter or food or water. And with the, and if you guys make more houses, then it makes it better for them so they can live longer. And I want to share an experience because the first time I fed the homeless, there was a guy at Fisherman's Lake, the park, and he was in a tent and they just, he was just released from the hospital and he was dying from cirrhosis of the liver and he didn't make it, unfortunately. And he probably would have if he was able to get a job for, to pay for his hospital bills. And he had previously gone to jail for being on the streets. And yeah.
Thank you. Paula Pennington, followed by Adamar Salsito Chavez.
At this point, it's not respectful. And I would like to say to District One, to District Five, and the manager and the district authorities, you guys been in a shelter? And one of the other things, you've been, you've been controlling my money, my pension, my, my foundation, and you guys still my, my patent. And I be act, I be working for Washoe County. I got discharged in nineteen twenty-two. So you guys collecting my unemployment, my pension, and my, and my home. And one of the other things, do you guys care about all this community? I want you to answer, you, Mike. Can you answer me?
Sir, you have to address the full board as a whole. Point of order.
Okay, at this point, I would like to get a carpet of the investigation if you guys do something wrong in all this community. And at this point, you guys don't give a shit. That's the way you're supposed to treat all these people. Why? Because you are retarded, you're nefasti. And I could say a lot of things. You guys take, you know where is my, my child's? Where they are? Supposedly, you're supposed to give in to me. You guys put me in a hospital. I supposed to dead already, but I'm still here. And I would like to know answers and so you have to act or send to the, to the cycle six in the Supreme Court. I got one fifty lawsuits at this point. And I would like to get acted on. My pension, my Social Security, and my home plan. At this point, you just don't give a shit about this.
Sir, please do not curse.
And I would like to, one of you come over and smell my clothes.
Right, I know dude, I love it.
Because it's not right whatever you guys doing to that community. But you don't get it. Sometimes you guys like canacho heads. And I am, this point, I'm done. And my Social Security number is 603-3648-22, so keep me in the record.
Paula Pennington, followed by Simona Fissani.
Good morning and thank you for allowing me to talk about Item 11, which I'm opposed to. My name is Paula Pennington and I live in District Five. I belong to St. Vincent de Paul along with Catholic Charities and Faith in Action. I had a career with a major airline for fifty-two years as a flight attendant and I just retired three years ago. I thought I had experienced and seen it all. I was blessed with a home, money in the bank, a pension, and all the things that we all want. Since working for St. Vincent de Paul, I can now say, now I know what life is all about. Loving our neighbor housed or unhoused, being nonjudgmental. And I, like many other people, thought the unhoused were either druggies or alcoholics or mental cases. I was wrong. There are no guarantees in life, so many of these peoples, people and families have had really bad things happen to them in their life. Maybe a divorce, a loss of job, disabilities, a major health problem, some, some, some reason why they cannot work. Loss of a home through disaster of some kind. They don't want to be on the streets. They don't want to be on the streets. I fed a gentleman named Alex a couple of weeks ago. I'll call him a freshman because he's only been on the streets for, for six months. I fed him, I gave him a coat and blanket and talked with him for a while. I also told him to contact Catholic charities. They may be able to help him. As he was crying, he told me he was disabled. He had no disability, he had disabilities, but had no disability, was disapproved for disability. He had worked for 19 years for FedEx, which gave him physical problems. He was also suffering from prostate problems, which made it very bad for trying to get a job if you have to go to the bathroom every 15.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes. You can come up with the next item.
Simona Visani, followed by Pam Gormley.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Simona Visani, and I am a registered voter here in the Washoe County. And I'm here because I oppose, as many people before me have, the ordinance you suggest. And I was prepared to give you my many reasons why I oppose the ordinance, but they have done a very beautiful job, so I'm not talking about that anymore. I agree strongly with everything that is said, that was said about this. The only thing I want to point out is a very important issue here. We have, first of all, before you decide if to make this ordinance go through or not, to think about who a criminal is. And honestly, we have different options here. A criminal can be a killer with an evil mind or, as you propose, a person who just sleeps in the park because he doesn't have a house to go to and who is an amazing human being. So it's up to you to decide who a criminal is. For my personal experience, you know, I've been working for about three years now here in Reno with homeless people because we are actually feeding them, you know, I'm mainly, I mainly belong to the Reno Posse group. So essentially, we go every Wednesday afternoons to the Barbara Vennett Park, and we give home-cooked meals to the poor people there who don't have food, essentially. And they got so much interested in their cause and their stories, but now I go on my own. I pack some snacks every time I have free time, and they go to the river, and they just meet them. And they are nice human beings. I can say that they are nicer human beings than my own family members. Recently, I met a guy whose name is Ed, who is about the same age as my older son. And when I go to the park, I speak to him, and I feel more comfortable in telling things to him than to my own son because my son doesn't like me to go to the park and have contact with the homeless people. He says, "Mom, it's dangerous." And I say, "You know, when you go there, you understand who's dangerous or not." I mean, there are homeless people who are very, you know, kind of aggressive with you. So if you try to feed them, they say, "Go away, I don't want you." So I mean, I just go away. But some others will say, "Oh, thank you, what do you have?" I mean, they thank me a thousand times, I mean, just to give them a few food. So please, my time is up, and I really hope you make the right decision. For me, it's homeless are not criminals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Gormley, followed by Wendy Johnson.
Good day, county commissioners and those attending this meeting. I am Pam Gormley, District One, and I am speaking out against Item 11. I am involved in Faith in Action Nevada, Housing Not Harm, the Reno Posse, and am an active member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Northern Nevada. I have read and reread this proposal by the sheriffs many times. It is a four-page, point-by-point spelling out of all the activities done by the homeless which will now cause citations and misdemeanors. To say they are a violation of human rights is a complete understatement. Taking the totality of the proposal into account, homeless people are stripped of their humanity. Ah, but look, if you look at the proposal, Section 50.400, Item Number Two, ah, here's a listing of activities you can do if you are housed. You can rest at ease. How terrible to divide the haves from the have-nots in this way. The general population will not feel the wrath of this proposal if they have a medical emergency, if they are disabled and on devices. They also are going to be safe when they're at permitted public activities, parades, and festivals. And the list goes on in that section. How despicable to list the privileges granted to people who have money enough to be housed. This ordinance shows intolerance, and it discriminates against the most vulnerable. The ordinance clearly is an example of man's inhumanity to man.
Thank you.
Wendy Johnson, followed by Christine Silva.
At this point, I invoke the United Nations 1 to 100.
Sir, you already had your opportunity to speak. Thank you. You can come up on the next item.
My name is Wendy Johnson, and I have been a substitute teacher. I've owned a home, and I've been homeless here in Reno. And the things that are going on with the homeless, there are women being murdered on the river. There are rapes being done in the homeless shelters. And they have to sign a paper saying they will not contact the media and explain what's going on in these shelters. And you guys have made homelessness illegal where murder and rape is not, it's hidden. And that's not fair to you guys because you guys haven't had all the information that's needed to make proper choices in making this legal or illegal. I have seen people die on the sidewalks of cold. I live on Fourth Street down by the homeless, and I see it firsthand, and I hear the stories of things that happened to the homeless. And to add illegal issues because they have no home when sweeping under the rug murders and rapes, that's not fair, that's not humane. And it's not fair that you guys are unaware of the true situation of the homeless because they are muzzled when they go to the CARES Campus. They have to sign a waiver releasing, and they get kicked out if they talk to anybody about stuff like this. And that's not fair to you guys to rely on the people who are making the money for putting this up, like making money for them being in the jails. That puts money above everything and makes homeless criminals where rapers and murderers go free.
Thank you.
Christine Silva, followed by Ron Cockrell.
Good morning, and thank you. My name is Christine Silva, and I'm a resident of Washoe County and a constituent of District Five. I've been involved with Faith in Action Nevada's Housing Not Harm campaign, and I'm speaking in opposition to Agenda Item 11. I don't support this ordinance as it is written because I believe we, as a community, are measured by how we protect and care for the most vulnerable among us. As a teacher, I work with young students with autism, with neurodivergence. And as a parent, I'm a parent of a trans, non-binary young adult. Both of these demographics are overrepresented among the unhoused populations. We know there's many, many reasons for homelessness, and it's a complex issue. And I'm not expert. I would like to echo all the wonderful things that have been said today about the issues and concerns with this ordinance as it is written. As a parent and as a community member, I want us to build a future community that is inclusive and supportive. I would like for us to be measured by how well we are supporting those marginalized and most vulnerable among us, how we are showing our care, how we are seeking solutions that, that's give hope and give support and give pathways to, to, to greater success and greater inclusion in community, not those ordinances that might cause harm. So I'd just like to echo all the wonderful things that have been said and say that I do oppose Agenda Item 11. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Cockrell, followed by Rose Gravlin.
I want everybody here to know that I do hate speaking in public. But there's Mary, Eric, Gina, Alex, Clara, and Mike. What was the last lady that just spoke first name? Or were we all asleep up here? Or is this just rhetoric? What I do know is on July 11th of last year, me, along with approximately 100 homeless people, set up tents along a dog run, which usually was there for their dogs to, you know, have valve mums, so I don't say a cuss word here. And yet, the police came along at 7:00 in the morning, kicked me in the ribs, and everyone that was sleeping there, told them to get the F up, we don't know what that means, but to get our F-ing shoes on, get the F down the road, and not to touch any of our personal property. I lost my baby pictures, my clothes. I lost my blankets, I lost my food, I lost everything I owned down there because if I'd have touched it, I was going to F-ing jail. So we all left, they took my tent and all that. So when y'all are no longer prejudiced or biased about any of this, you'll go ahead and go after the police force that done this to us, stole all of our personal property. These people were doing nothing more than sleeping in a tent. And for them to be allowed to come through, take everybody's personal possessions at will, is theft. I don't care if I'm rich, if I'm poor, none of the above, it's still theft. You stole from us. You put down two dumpsters down on the river, six portable potties, and if there are 2,000 people that are homeless, well, the river's never been cleaner. Then you took all that away, and you waited a month. And everybody started bagging up trash and bagging up trash, trying to keep the place clean. And then you brought a film crew down there, said, "Look what they're doing to our river. Look what they're doing to our river here." Because your trash, and your trash, and your trash goes in a green dumpster and disappears with waste management, puff, like a genie. And you bury it in there and destroy the soil and the water. You think that that's better? Our trash is just up on top. Oh, well, you can see it. Yep, but we, we got, for every one homeless person, a person with a resident takes 25 homeless people to equal what they do, physical waste. Water waste, I don't have no carpet, I don't have my washing dryer here. You got up to 50%. 50 of these people in here right now will not produce as much water pollution as one person with a resident. And as far as your cars, there's not enough homeless people out here right now to equal one person driving a car, which is, don't have the fuel to burn up and pollute the earth or the air. Sitting here saying, "How about we take that $500 for that person that's homeless, go rent a motel for a month?" Nope, we'd rather put them in jail. Why? You just like being sadistic, evil towards homeless people? Why? Just, they're sleeping in a car, and they go rob a bank? Arrest them for robbing a bank. Don't arrest them for sleeping in a car. Hey, what are we supposed to do? Levitate when we need to sleep? You have a baby in a baby carriage, and then sleeps, are you going to put them in jail too? Or is it just homeless people? Or people that look like they might be homeless? My baby fell asleep in his baby.
Thank you, sir.
Rose Gravlin, followed by Vicki Bayless.
Hi, forgive me, I'm sick, but I'm homeless. I got an eviction a few days, or not a few days, but a few years ago. And I've been homeless ever since. I cannot make an eviction wrong because I didn't pay my rent. I just couldn't do it. Um, I didn't have the money. So because somebody doesn't have money doesn't mean that's wrong. You can't arrest them because they don't have money. I've been homeless for almost two years now, and it's very hard. I just want you guys to know that. Forgive me, be kind, but it's very hard. And these people who are homeless are kind. They've helped me. So I want you all to know that it would not be fair to make us criminals. It's not a criminal to not be able to pay your rent. I'm not a criminal. Please forgive me for crying. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Vicki Bayless, followed by Fedencia Ruiz.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Vicki Bayless. I am homeless. I have a tent down at, under the Will Silver Pass. But I also am working with the new shelter on Fourth Street. I don't want to stay in the shelter because I had a bad incident happen to me when I was sleeping in there. But, so I have a tent down there, and I stay down there, but I still follow through with caseworker in the shelter. They're helping me get up, back up on feet and get my ID, my social, whatever I need to get back on my feet. So even though I still have a tent down at the Will Silver Pass, and it's so cold out there, oh my god. But I still am working with the caseworker at the CARES Campus. I have a case manager there. And they are there to help people. They're helping me. You just got to follow through with what they want. They have certain rules, and those certain rules, I don't want to bite by most of them. You can only have so much stuff in there, and the food's nasty, and it's not really a whole lot to eat. And I don't support this ordinance. I don't think going to jail is going to prove anything. It's going to make it worse. That's all I have to say. Thank you. I'm glad to speak here.
Thank you.
Fedencia Ruiz, followed by Douglas Sabolik.
Hello. I have a lot of anger against the city and the county. I mean, a lot of times, you guys take our stuff and just throw it away. How are we going to get ourselves back on our feet when you guys keep stealing our stuff? You guys show up, without warning, throw our stuff away because we're out there trying to make a buck or something? I mean, we're criminals already from the get-go. How are we going to ever get our feet under us if you guys keep throwing our stuff away, taking our stuff without letting us know and making us a criminal before we are even a citizen, as you guys say? I mean, if you guys would look at it, you're the guys that are criminals because you're making us work. Like I said, I mean, we are criminals in your eyes because we are homeless. We're human beings. We're not trash. We got a right to be, live our life in peace instead of being taken to jail or worse. Because after that, we're going to lose all we've got again. When are we going to scare it up out of the hole we're in if you guys keep pushing us down in there? And that's true. I mean, you knew how much anger I have for the people doing this to us. It's no surprise. You have to look into what they're doing and then judge us after what they do because we're trying to survive, and they're just, they don't care. Nobody does. A few people do, which more will help us instead of just pushing us down and making us look bad. Because we're not bad people. We just make mistakes, and we're trying to correct them. But we cannot, and you guys keep pushing us down and stepping on us just so you guys can look better. That's no life for nobody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Douglas Sabolik, followed by Chastity Martinez.
Hi, y'all. I was here last month. It's me, Doug Sabolik. Thanks for being here. I think the first impact to this is we're seeing people no longer staying on public grounds other than staying on private property now. You have to be called in to trespass. You have to be called in to trespass on that property by the property management or owner. So we're finding that the homeless are moving towards private property, creating a bigger problem for the private owner. Relinquishes the problem from the government, but anyhow, I've been living homeless for a long time and I do my best every day to not be a criminal. Obviously, everybody here knows who I am to some level. We're seeing extreme violence in the streets. We're seeing desperation. We're seeing no places to go. Water, disease, increased bad. All the problems that I've heard here today amongst all these folks, amongst this home room, even these folks here, folks in those uniforms, we don't want to be against each other. And I know you don't want to be against us, we don't want to be against you. The preamble of the United States Constitution starts with "we, the people," in order to create a more perfect union. We, the people. It's you, me, them, us, humans. In America, America is a sign for all the world. We're a melting pot of every ethnic group around the world. We are the experiment. And homelessness is a capitalistic problem. It's haves versus have-nots. We have enough. We all pitch in under taxes. We raise them, we lower them. It's up to us, representatives. We're all voted in. No property owner wants to deal with the homeless. And it's really pushed it on them bad. The ambassadors, since the last time I spoke, I've been assaulted. I've been kicked in the head right after I spoke, tried to steal my backpack. No legal recourse. I'm being gang stalked constantly. The drugs and the problems go neighborhood to neighborhood. What else can I do? I deal with these people's problems. Every problem you heard today, I've been dealing with for eight years straight, every single morning, every single day. Because I stand up for everybody there is, whether it's right or wrong. And I have nothing. And now you want to make me a criminal? I promise you, I don't leave trash shit piss nowhere. I'm sorry to talk like that. I do my best to support y'all, those folks there, so they ain't gotta have a hard day today and they can go home to their wife and kids. I support these folks getting a platform to be safe from. Y'all do the right thing.
Thank you.
Chastity Martinez followed by Betty Bishop.
Hi. Good morning, Chair and County Commissioners. My name's Chastity Martinez. I live in District 5 and I'm an organizer with Faith in Action Nevada. I stand here today in opposition to the anti-camping ordinance under Agenda Item 11. And I know you've heard a lot from us for the last several months, and this has been a long public comment session. And we know these types of ordinances are sweeping across our country right now, even leading to an upcoming Supreme Court decision. And while we understand the sheriff and the Hope Team's intentions with this and the efforts made to make it less harmful, at the end of the day, it's still an anti-camping ordinance. It's still fundamentally flawed by being a law that criminalizes people for doing things that are life-sustaining and it discriminates against people that lack housing. It's been proven by research that it doesn't work. There's a reason why even the federal government suggests not passing these types of ordinances. And what has been researched, you know, proven to work is housing first and providing quality services to give people dignified options. And there are many people in this room that opposes ordinance passionately, as you can tell. Some people are here because they know the experience of being unhoused. They currently are, they've lived it before. They know people that will be impacted by this or they will themselves. People here that work as service providers or mutual aid, they see day in and day out the impact of this issue on the streets. And some people are here because they're compelled by their faith and values to speak up for what is right. And many of us also see this as simply an unnecessary use of county resources, taxpayer dollars, when we already have things in the books that are illegal. So there are many reasons not to support this ordinance from a moral and logical standpoint. So I want to ask for those of you in the audience, if you are in opposition to this ordinance and you'd like to see more long-term, permanent housing solutions, if you can please We all want a safe, secure, and healthy community. I believe everyone deserves that regardless of their housing status. And to create that requires solutions that are both collaborative and creative. And unfortunately, this ordinance is neither of those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Bishop followed by Nicholas St. John.
My name is Betty Bishop and I'm a resident of Washoe County. I'm also the president of the St. Vincent de Paul Society. And we do a lot of outreach and we see exactly what these people are talking about today. Just recently, we had a lady who had been battered and she was trying to find housing. She went to the different domestic violence places and there was no, no place for her to go. There wasn't a place for her in the shelter. And so she ended up in her car and because she was found sleeping in her car, she ended up by the Sparks Police being arrested. And her car was impounded and her dog was put in, I guess, some kind of shelter. We heard about the case and because we are a charity that tries to help people, we had to pay for her empowerment fees so she could get her car back and also help to get her dog back. In another case, there was a couple that came from Las Vegas. They did not know about the ordinance that Reno had about sleeping by the river. So they were sleeping too close to the river. They were given a warning and they did move, but they evidently didn't move far enough away from the river. So then they were found again and cited, given the warning, and then that time they were given a citation. They had to appear before Community Court. They said that Community Court, they really liked the judge and how the judge treated them, but they went back, they had to report back to Community Court to report about their progress. So they went back, reported, they went back again and reported, but they did not know they had to show up the third time. And so they missed that appointment. Because they missed that Community Court appointment, then a warrant was put out for them. In the meantime, they had found some housing for a week, but they, because here in Reno and in different places, the police do go and check the list of people that are in some of the motels. And they found out that that couple was there and then they had a warrant, they were arrested, put in jail for five days. At the end of five days, they got out, went back to their motel, only to find out then that they had been evicted and locked out. This is what's going on in our community. It affects people. It's wrong.
Thank you.
Nicholas St. John followed by Bill Sims.
One of these for each of the county commissioners.
Mr. St. John has passed out some documents which will be given to the board.
For the record, Nicholas St. John, a non-fictitious, non-corporate entity, a living, breathing, natural man. Before you, what you have is a document that outlines the issue that we've had with Clara Andriola since May of 2023. She was appointed, she was therefore given 30 days by law in R S Code 282.200 that indicates that if she does not have a bond within that 30 days, she forfeits her appointment and the seat becomes vacant. I'm doing this with good faith and clean hands. This is not, I'm not doing this with intent to harass, cause distress, or anxiety. I'm sharing this because we are supposed to be a law-abiding nation and a law-abiding state. You have before you all the information that indicates that county commissioners are in fact officials and that they are to exercise public power, trust, or duty, and that they do expend money. Because the law is very clear, it's not an if statement, it's a when statement. Those elected have 10 days to produce a bond. Those who are appointed have 30. Clara Andriola did not meet her 30-day status, nor has she since then. 282.200, forfeiture of office or appointment upon failure to file a new or additional bond. Any officer or a person who fails within the 10 days or within 30 days for the date of first insertion of public or posted service to file a new or additional bond, the office or appointment of the person or officer so failing shall become vacant. And such officer or person shall forfeit such office or appointment. Impersonation of an officer, N R S Code 199.430. Every person who shall falsely impersonate a public officer in such assumed character shall do any act purporting to be official. Hereby, another is injured or defrauded, shall be guilty of a gross misdemeanor. The gross misdemeanor is 364 days, up to 364 days in jail, $2,000 in fine. You're guilty of a misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor of probably in excess of 70 times since May. We hereby come before you presenting this documentation and we demand that you resign within the next 24 hours.
Bill Sims followed by Hillary Olson.
Morning, Commissioner Hill, fellow commissioners. Of course, my name is Bill Sims for the record, and I am here to give public comment on my opposition of Agenda Item 11. I want to say today that we, as a county and community, do not need to further penalize our fellow community members for not having what other people, namely the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, would consider the correct kind of roof over their heads, that is their vehicle, and would have those same people judge them for it by making them criminals with that misdemeanor. As someone who had a father who was homeless and slept in a tent by a freeway exit, which I did with him dozens and dozens of times, and dealt with things that even I, as his son, could not understand completely about his situation with homelessness because I was not him, and as a kid, I did see it quite often, I cannot see morally a world where we, as a community, and every one of you on that dais, would criminalize others for not having the, quote, correct kind of roof over their head. So I would implore you today to ask yourselves, if you were in this position, would you want to be criminalized and scorned by your own community, every one of us in this room right now, for surviving in a world where affording a place to live in 2024 is currently next to impossible to do, even if you have a full-time job? Not if it were likely to ever happen to any of you, but if it actually did. Would you want us, as a community, to be okay with every one of your criminalizations and be okay with our scorn for you for your lack of a correct kind of roof over your heads that we don't agree with in the same manner that Washoe County Sheriff's Office agrees that they don't have the correct kind of roof over their heads at the moment? If you have to think about it because you wouldn't want that, then please do not pass this resolution. And also remember that I know the Washoe County Sheriff's Office is going to give themselves glowing reviews on how they handle the homelessness issue in Washoe County. But remember, they're the ones putting the handcuffs on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hillary Olson followed by Janet Butcher.
Hi, I'm Hillary. You guys make your own criminals. I mean, it's insane. So I had, during Corona, two years ago, I've been homeless for two years. RHA put me on a six-month contract and cut me off at two months without warning, my son and I, my eight-year-old and son and I. I had a job at Amazon and I got kicked out of housing. It was for Corona relief. So it was very personal. It was a personal thing. So I got kicked out of my housing and they raised my rent by $500 a month, leaving me with no choice with, and they said they didn't have enough for extra. So what happened to that money? Because the Republicans sent over that money to the Democrats when housing, when all that housing and stuff, like, you guys got trillions of dollars for housing. What happened to that money? Because we're all still out here. Two years I've been homeless and we're all still out here. I mean, and Cares Campus is always full. I go in and out, in and out. I mean, I've gone to every, you know, all the shelters, all the things, and I gotta sleep on a fucking, I gotta sleep on a chair. There's no room. And then you guys keep us out in the snow, that breaks a peace treaty. It breaks the peace treaty and causes war. So you guys have caused a civil war. And so now none of us can trust any of you. And so it causes separation. It's a lack of unity in our community. And that's a big fucking problem because this is America.
Please don't curse.
This is America. Well, this is the difference between you and I because I'm real. And you guys want to sit back there and smile and do this like, you know, your seven sins, gluttony BS. Like, we're out here surviving. You know how many times, like, the cops are getting manipulated. Like, some things came over the cop shop because the cop shop and the city of Reno, two grown men said, "You're not pretty." Who says that? Like, there's shit that's going on that you guys don't understand, that you're not understanding. Actually, I think you do understand. I think the Democrats, I think they sold us out, to be honest with you. And they got chipped, we got chipped, and the optic fibers, the optic fibers are for the power lines. That's how you send data. You know how much I've taken out of my head? Which actually, so it's a sensoratory, they map your sensoratory part of your brain. And then they can go in and that's at the hospitals, the hospitals that started the Corona, during coronavirus, and so they can map our brain and they go click, 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 and they can control our hormones, things that happen are not always people's control. And I've sued you guys for actually $7 trillion. I went and turned in my lawsuit again yesterday. But I just want to say, you guys make your own criminals. You make your own criminals, Washoe County, and you do it for money. Money, property, and prestige. You guys need help with moderation. I have a lot of solutions. You know, Reno made me like, all these things, I'm an opal, opal, opal. Like, is that manipulation? Is that fun for you guys? You made me the leadership, the presidency, the company. Like, is that fun? Is that fun? I've been a targeted individual for two years. I'm the longest-lasting targeted individual. You guys have tried to kill me over 2,000 times. It is a psychological war. And I'm not proud of you, Washoe County.
Janet Butcher followed by Raymond Justman.
Janet Butcher for the record, please enter my comments verbatim into the minutes. I want to make note publicly that every month, a scheduled meeting for the Board of Commissioners has been canceled. No clear reason given, except for it's obviously, there were, what, there could have been a quorum, but we don't want a certain commissioner to run the meetings. It's pretty obvious. Last week, we were subjected to Pelosi's wrap-up smear. So I researched a few non-RGJ sites to obtain the rest of the story. While researching, I came across two articles in the Pecan Press, which I will give them ac-... which I will give them accolades for, which were unrelated to my original quest. One article was on the recent trustee appointment to the library board and her connection with one of the commissioners. Another about emails being spent and sent out on county time and with county money. I hope the other commissioners are looking into these emails other than Commissioner Clark. I'm going to switch gears because I, I didn't, I wondered why we were having a special meeting and now I see why. And it is quite a dilemma. Because where, where I agree with the ordinance may not be the correct way to go. I also have to say, what are we supposed to do about all of this? We've invited, we've invited homelessness. We've invited it to our community. I assist a family member with housing because there's no way on $900 a month disability check that they can pay for their apartment. But one of the things that is kind of in contradiction as we sit here and talk about the New Green Deal and that we need to get rid of gas, which can be affordable, but then we complain about not having affordable housing. So it's a real whack-a-mole thing. You create the problem and then you try to do a solution. It is distressing when you have to step over people, but I don't blame those people. So it's a real dilemma and I think we need to step back and take a good look at how to solve the problem and stop taking and putting more regulations on housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raymond Justman followed by Ashley Hastings.
I don't have to vote no on that ordinance because that ordinance is clearly not just for the homeless, it's for everybody. Have you guys considered what you're doing to the burners that come in every year bringing all the millions of dollars here? Have you considered what you're doing to the truck drivers that sleep in their vehicles? Are you going to find them, each and every one of them, after they spend their money here? Well, I was born in Nevada, so I'm a native, right? But on my application it says I have to put Caucasian because I'm white. Why can't I put Native American? I should have the right to hunt, fish, camp, do whatever I want in the state of Nevada, just to survive. And that's why I'm living in a tent right now, just to survive. I support myself because in 2022, both of my hands were mauled by a dog. I lost a lot of strength in both hands. But I rehabilitate myself. I use mini tools to keep my hands busy, keep my fingers working. Yes, they hurt, they hurt every day, but I keep moving them because I have to move them because nobody's going to do it for me. I still have two dead fingers, but they're coming alive if I keep working on it every day. And I was in the campus, they give you a clarity card, everything's, well, don't forget, there's another number. Has nothing to do with you, but there's another number. And then the government gives us phones, free, free phones. But can Washoe County provide us with charging stations? Maybe we could contact someone that we could get a job that we can do, maybe with one hand or, or one and a half hands? Or you guys have both hands. And to stay warm at night, we might have to build a fire or something where you guys can go turn up your thermostat. You're burning propane there, but this ordinance is going to outlaw torches and propane tanks and everything like that? Those torches are just cigarette lighters. Yes, we smoke. And another thing I mentioned, three minutes is not enough for the average person up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley Hastings followed by Nick Martin.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ashley. I'm here today in hopes to express that this issue is not just about individuals lacking shelter. It's about addressing the root causes that contribute to homelessness, such as economic instability, mental health issues, substance abuse, and systemic inequalities. By favoring ordinances that push homelessness and homeless individuals towards resources, we're taking a proactive approach to tackling this issue. These ordinances serve as a pathway to connect homeless individuals with vital services, such as housing, mental health support, job training, and substance abuse treatment. By providing access to these resources, we empower individuals to regain stability, rebuild their lives, and ultimately reintegrate into society. Supporting such ordinances is not just about assisting the unhoused population. It is about creating a safer and more inclusive community. By ensuring that individuals experiencing this difficult situation have access to the resources that they need, we can reduce instances of public disorder, alleviate strain on emergency services, and also create a more compassionate, supportive environment for everybody. It is important to recognize that this is not a problem that can be solved overnight, but by coming together as a community and implementing policies that prioritize assistance and support, we can make meaningful strides towards addressing this issue. By favoring ordinances that push unhoused individuals towards resources, we are not only demonstrating our commitment to compassion and empathy, but also working towards a brighter and more equitable future for all. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Nick Martin followed by George Pastrazny.
Morning. I'm Nick Martin, 50-year resident, nearly 50-year resident of Washoe County. Taxpayer homeowner, raised three kids from birth till adulthood here. Definitely a constituent. And I like to talk or stand up or talk about three groups or four groups that have been mentioned unless I missed it. I like to talk for the kids that can't use a park because it's dirty and very dangerous. I like to talk about mothers who can't walk their babies because of the same reason, dirty and dangerous. People afraid to park their cars. The people lucky enough to try to run businesses in these areas when the homeless are all around and crime and so forth, it's tough to run a business, get customers. So the unforgotten, the forgotten I should say, is that I'm the only one that got up here in all this time to speak about those groups. Those were important people, they're constituents, taxpayers, backbone of the community, okay? So when someone throws on that social justice wear cape and they get excited, passionate, bat themselves in self-satisfaction, it's a wonderful feeling, but I don't see where they do anything. I don't, I just, anymore in America bought into this stuff years ago and we're seeing through it now. So anybody who's wearing that cape, I would challenge you and, and say that, you know, you can do something right now to fix this problem, to help fix the problem. Take some of these people into your own home. If one of them did that, I'd start maybe believing in what they talk about. But none of them will, none of them have ever done it. It's always the same thing, get up here and cry about stuff and, you know, purport to be helping these groups and so forth. But they don't put any skin in the game. You know, they want somebody else to do it, they want government to do it, they want me to do it, they want my taxes to go up to help. It's ridiculous, it's ridiculous. So I'm always suspect when I see new faces in here talking and they tend to be overwhelmingly toward one side of an issue or the other. I saw it during Jeanne Herman's election bill, election integrity. I mean, one of them got up and said she was from Sacramento, California, he still let her speak. He said, "Ma'am, what are you doing here? This, you live in Sacramento, this is Washoe County." So what I'm trying to throw out there is some common sense. And I know I'm a super pariah here today, luckily half the room empty, they would have attacked me. But I'm for the damn bill, you know? Unless, unless there's a real solution. And really, it's ridiculous even talking about this when we all know a year from now it's going to be three times worse. When the southern border is open and we got millions of people flooding in who are by definition homeless and many of them are going to end up here, it will be worse in a year. So I hope I don't have to come up here in a year and say the same thing. I mean, I hope it's not falling on deaf ears, but I'm a constituent, folks, you know? Backbone of the community. Don't leave us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Pastrazny followed by Nathaniel Phillips.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for allowing this public comment. I'm here specifically, like most, to speak on Agenda Item 11. I'm a, I'm a Washoe County resident, 30, 50, 45-year-old resident in northern Nevada and a longtime homeowner. I think a couple of the, the two recent speakers I think have spoken to some of the long-term goals that want to be achieved and I think it's commendable. I think we all want to achieve that. We want to create a win-win situation. However, the ordinance that's proposed now does not do that. And I would strongly urge you to vote against that ordinance or at best abstain until, I think, at a minimum, what has to be adopted so that it's on equal footing with the ordinance. The only way to allow this ordinance to achieve its objective is to adopt as a component of the ordinance, the policy 425. That's the draft policy of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office so that it's on equal enforceable footing and that none of the actions, enforcement actions can be taken until it's fully implemented. Because that's the element that provides the pathway to get people off the streets and get them to lead productive lives, which is what we want them all to do. So I think, I think what's called for is to voting this down now and sending it back for further work and for conversations with the stakeholders that I think should include the Reno Housing Authority. I just, informally, I understand that they haven't made any comments on the record here, perhaps they have. But so that we can try to work through this issue and understanding that not everybody will be happy, but that there's a common sense approach. But the way it is now, this problem will make it worse if, if this ordinance is adopted as it stands now because it will push the problem out into different areas of the communities. It'll take people off the river, push them out into some of these more diffuse neighborhood parks, whatever, that the other speaker was talking about. And it's going to be just as unmanageable, if not more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Nathaniel Phillips.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Nathaniel Phillips. I'm, was born and raised in Nevada and delighted to have relocated to Reno, to the Washoe County once again. But being a LasVagan, we certainly have quite the experience with this very same issue. In fact, it was so severe during the COVID pandemic that a United Nations rapporteur came and visited our state. These are people who are experts internationally, across the world, in their subject matter. And what did they find here in Nevada? They found that Nevada officials, your colleagues, and now you would be amongst them if you vote for this ordinance, were permitting people, instead of camping wherever they might find shelter, they were packing them like a warehouse onto the pavement of Cashman Field in downtown Las Vegas, like property or like boxes at a port in a warehouse. Not our neighbors, not our family members. But to bring it up to Washoe County just the other day while participating in a river justice cleanup organized by Washoe, by county champions like Autumn and Beverly Harry and the indigenous, and indigenous relatives, we interacted with folks living along the truckie as we picked up trash next to them and with them. Something I doubt, well, I don't know if any of you have done that. So I'm not sure if any of you can make the decision you're about to make with the requisite amount of dignity and compassion for your fellow county residents, especially you, Commissioner Hill. And I would like to perhaps invoke the work of a colleague of mine, Lilith Barron, who courageously went to the legislature and was able to get the legislature to pass a bill to prevent something that you all are going to perpetuate right now, the criminalization of homelessness. So not only has the Ninth Circuit found that this ordinances like this are patently unconstitutional because they violate our protections against unreasonable and inhumane punishment, they're cruel. It's almost unimaginable that we would incarcerate and vilify someone for substance abuse, for poverty, for a society that denigrates them and cares little to nothing about them. We've had other Washoe County people, officials in Washoe County utilize the police force as their personal body cards against homeless people. So please find the humility in your heart to reject this and let's actually find public health solutions. The police are not one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Manuela Barba.
Excuse me, this is my first time, so. My name is Manuela Dolores Barba and I'm very proud of who I am and of who I represent in this community. I raised my family, my children, they were born here in Reno, they're very proud of that. And I, I'm a graduate of college, degree in social work. I have tried very hard to teach my children that if you try hard, you could succeed as long as, you know, you stay straight and I've tried to prove that. I myself have found myself to become homeless very, very, very confusing to me, the homeless situation. It's not a hard thing to say, but it is very, very situational, I think. I'm, I'm a woman, I'm single. I have an education. I really thought that I did all the things necessary to be able to succeed as a, as a member of the community. But I've also been denied housing or, you know, mental wellness due to different situations. But I don't believe that homelessness is a choice that we make. I think that, I don't believe that, who honestly chooses to have no home? I mean, it's just, it's very sad to me. And I do believe that there's an undeniable stigma against the homeless. But is that really enough to allow the stigma to become law? A law that takes away my chance of becoming a much-needed and very dedicated social worker by labeling my situation as criminal? I just don't see how that makes any sense. I, I really need the support and help of everyone, the people that are homeless with me, my children, need to be able to see that it's possible. And with your help, with your help, I would be very, very grateful to be given the opportunity to bring much, much of my experience and my, my dedication to a community that I love and I'm very proud of.
Thank you.
No one else has signed in?
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I would love if we could just take a quick break and come back at noon so we can use the restroom and then we'll come back to the regular agenda. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, it is 12 o'clock. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order, and we will move to item four, Mr. Manager.
Item four. Item four, Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information, and Topics for Future Agendas.
Do you have anything for us, Mr. Manager?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. I am looking to the Board to see if folks have something. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we certainly had an earful here this morning. There's a few folks that I noted that I'd like to find out more information about. I continue to hear this about the CARES campus, and whenever I address it, many folks think that I'm just creating this out of fiction. But a lady by the name of Wendy Johnson talking about unsafe conditions, another lady by the name of Vicky Bayless talking about unsafe conditions at the CARES campus, and that's one of the reasons why they don't like to go there. I'd like to see if there's some type of way that we could have a county investigation, not investigated by the county, and have an inquiry and find out what's really taking place. And if it is, and if it isn't, we need to get that on the record as well. So it's my first comment. I'd also like to ask, and I have asked and I've talked to Mr. Edwards about this, canceling county meetings and why. I noticed today that even though she's not here physically, she's online, and that's a way we can conduct meetings where if somebody needs to be out of the area, and if we have a quorum, we can still have a meeting. But if somebody's out of the area, they can still come in and zoom in. So I'd like to find out why we're canceling meetings, it seems like, on a regular basis. Also, I'd like to see if the county can commission a survey of the property that the City of Reno dedicated to the county on Lyon Street. There seems to be some confusion on who owns the property, where the guard shack is. If you remember, Tom Green was accused of trespassing on property that may or may not have been county-owned property. So I'd like to find out exactly what the county owns on Lyon Street and have it marked by a professional surveyor. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just share some information that I think is important. One, I wanted to thank the staff for following up with the State Controller Matthews to look at the continued exploration of the implementation of the Nevada checkbook for full transparency and accountability. It's, I think, a great opportunity to have Washoe County participate in the state's rollout of that. And it's my understanding that staff has had discussions, and I'm looking forward for all of us to learn more. I also wanted to share a couple things that occurred at the NACO meeting. Vice Chair Herman and I both sit on that board. The first is that the NACO Board on Friday unanimously passed a resolution recognizing April as National County Government Month, and I'm hoping that staff can look into having a similar resolution that this body can approve for the month of April. I also want to share that NACO also passed, or actually read into the record, a comment letter that addressed the communication efforts between the BLM in Washington, D.C. and the local communications here in our state. And it appears there's a disconnect, a disconnect so much that decisions are being made from afar that really are encroaching government and not allowing the local counties to participate in those local decisions. And I would like to ask if staff can look into the NACO-approved letter that was read into the record at the NACO meeting, and I'm happy to supply that, and really look at supporting for other counties who have signed into the premise of that letter. So I'm hoping that Washoe County can consider that, and this board can take that into consideration and act accordingly when it's appropriate. I also want to share an update. I had several months ago spoke about the designation of the possibility of a park or some type of recreational designation for property that is in my district. And it is called by a couple different names. A study was done recently, recently. A study was done in 2012, which isn't recently. A study was done, and they called it "The Court of Antiquities." Others call it "The End of the World." I'm not sure why they call it "The End of the World." But here's what's important. The Lieutenant Governor and the Deputy Administrator of the State Nevada Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, we toured that again to look at, not only providing the study that was already completed in 2012, but to actually look at engaging those jurisdictions to designate this as a recreation opportunity. Because, as an example, there are 145 panels of petroglyphs, as an example, that are in this particular designation. It's absolutely gorgeous. It falls straight into a line that goes all the way to an existing Washoe County Park already. So I think there's opportunities for that to take place. It looks like that it's going to be placed on the State Nevada Advisory Board of Outdoor Recreation in June. So more to come on that. And that's all I have as an update. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to give the Board an update. As you know, I brought it up probably the last five or six years. It's come up numerous times. I've talked to the last three registrar voters, explaining that I keep getting a mail-in ballot sent to my house for somebody that I've known for over 50 years that I know resides in Australia. So I met with the Secretary of State's team. They did some research and got back to me. This person did, in fact, take himself off the voter rolls when he moved to Australia. However, he comes back, in fact, he'll be here in a couple of weeks to visit with me, comes back once or twice a year, gets his taxes done, has a Nevada driver's license. And because he gets a Nevada driver's license, the DMV automatically puts him on the voter rolls. So there's just unintended consequences of voter registration through the DMV. Somebody who doesn't live here, doesn't want to vote here, isn't, you know, still, I guess, they have dual citizenship now at this point in time, but on the voter rolls. So just a way of cluttering up our voter rolls. I'm big about cleaning out the voter rolls. In fact, I got somebody, sent me an email and asked me, "How dare I compare assessor rolls to voter rolls?" And the only comparison I was trying to use is accuracy, accuracy, and valid names on the rolls. And so that's what I'm talking about, valid names on the voter rolls. I'm not an election conspiracy theorist or any of that, but I just want accuracy in the rolls. And when the DMV gets involved, and, you know, they do a great job of what they do, but they're overworked. If you go in the DMV, they're all looking for employees. They don't have enough people to work there. That used to be a very coveted job, working for the state. And now they have a hard time finding people. And now they're tasked with helping the counties maintain voter rolls. I just think that's a waste of energy, time, and I don't think they have the time to do it properly. So again, we've got an incorrect voter roll because the DMV is tasked with doing this job. And I just need to get that on the record. And thanks to the Secretary of State for researching that and giving me an answer after five or six years of asking that question. Thank you.
Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything?
Okay. I just wanted, there was a note that during public comment that there wasn't a scheduled C-HAB meeting. There is a scheduled C-HAB meeting. It will be May 13th for people's information, and looking forward to that. And I want to thank Manager Brown for doing a really great presentation to the Incline Village, Crystal Bay community last week, updating them about all things Washoe County. Really great response, and I appreciate your engagement with all parts of our county. And I will say, there was a petition going around on River Mount Park about a small bridge that was going to be removed. It's a park that's in Washoe County, and there, a young gal named Geneva Davis put the petition together to ensure that the bridge wouldn't be removed. I want to say thank you to ACM Solero, who looked into this. We are seeing how we can create an ADA, a better ADA experience at that park. And we will not be removing the bridge. But I also want to commend Geneva and her father, Josh Davis, for the petition, engaging with local government and seeing those results. And so thank you very much. And if we don't have any other comments, we'll move to our consent. I know there is one consent item.
Does Commissioner Garcia have anything?
Oh, I apologize. Commissioner Garcia, before we move to consent, do you have any announcements?
No announcements, but I'd like to pull item 5D3 off of consent.
Okay, great. Any other Commissioners have items they want to pull off of consent?
Yes.
Okay.
5C1, I'd like to pull off.
Okay. And any other items? I'm not seeing any others. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on consent?
No, we don't.
Okay. Then I am looking for a motion to approve all the consent except for 5D3 and 5C1, please.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Looking for a second. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none. We will now move to item 5C1. Commissioner Clark.
Yes, I'd like to talk about that and this resolution to adopt the ground lease. We went from 30 years to 60 years on this. Also, when we're leasing something out for 60 years, it doesn't sound like we're intending to make much progress on homelessness if we're looking 60 years out for this. So I find that odd. But more importantly, after talking to the assessor's office this morning about this, I'd like to find out more about how the dollar amount of a dollar a year for 60 years to lease, how much square footage is this? And what's a dollar going to be worth from 50 years from now, or 40 years from now, or 30 years from now, or five years from now? I don't know. I don't know if we're leasing this out at a fair market rate. I don't know if we need to lease it out at a fair market rate. It sure has the appearance that somebody's getting a sweetheart deal, and it certainly isn't to citizens of the county. So I'd like to hear more about that. Do we have someone here who can give us a report? Get it on the record?
We do. We have Dana Cersey here.
Good morning, Dana Cersey, Washoe County, for the record. This is just an amendment to a lease that was approved by this Commission last April. We did increase from 30 years to 60. We are allowed up to 99 years. And we tried to get through with the bare minimum. And after working with the project, and now we're through that initial first phase, the first building, Phase 1, is almost fully funded, and they're getting ready to go out for funding for Phase 2. And we're looking at services, funding for that. So Accessible Space has asked us to increase the period that we will be leasing this, and that is because of the requirement of the grants that they'll be going after. We have learned that the maximum period of affordability that they're going to be targeting is about 50 years. And construction is slated, Phase 1 is to be complete in 2026, and Phase 2 is to be complete in 2029. And so 50 years out from there is just shy of the 60 years. And so we round it up just in case to give them a little bit of a buffer there. That's why the change is there.
Sounds like a good position, but again, I'm questioning the dollar amount. I mean, what's a dollar going to be worth next year? You know, why are we leasing this out so cheaply? That's my question. I mean, I'm willing to give the county $100 a year for it right now. So, you know, was that open competitive bidding? How does this work? Talking to the assessor's office this morning, this land is probably, for tax assessment values, probably $9 to $13 a square foot. And so how many square foot is the improvement going to be on?
This land was purchased for the purpose of supportive housing. And so the county is building a 50-unit project on one piece of the land, and three acres of the land approximately was determined to be for future development. And the county put this out to an RFP to see which developers may be able to develop supportive housing. And this is the piece that the county is providing into this project.
So we've got about 43,000 square foot per acre, times three, looking at 16,000 square foot, a million square foot? Over a million square foot, and leasing it out for a dollar a year? I don't know. How did somebody come up with that dollar number? Just need to walk me through that.
Again, Commissioner Clark, for the record, that was a decision that was made last April. And so we just extended that out beyond the 60 years. The county has the ability to lease land at $1 per year.
Sure. Maybe I didn't ask that question last April. But I'm asking it now because now I'm thinking about, how does somebody lease three acres of land for 60 years, for $60, when we have unbelievable increase in property values? And then we also have a significant drop in devaluation of the U.S. dollar. So, you know, it sounds like we're going the wrong way two different times here with not charging enough initially and looking into the future 60 years from now. I don't know what you're going to be able to buy with a dollar 60 years from now. Might be worth less than a penny at that time. I don't know.
Commissioner Clark.
Sure, just questions.
Sure, no. And I think that they're fair questions. But I will tell you, just on background, this Board has been very supportive of supportive housing. So people who can't live on their own, people who we can't put an apartment by themselves. And that housing is quite expensive. It's not something that can be done without government subsidy, which is that $1 lease. Same thing with the rest of the units, the 70 additional units that will be affordable housing on site. So it's incentivizing housing so we can house folks that are living in our CARES campus so that they can get, you know, into that permanent housing piece.
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion. My opinion is somebody, some contractor, some vendor, some supplier, some nonprofit, somebody's going to make some money off of this, and it won't be the county taxpayer. So I can't vote to support the extension from 30 years to 60 years. So just, that's my position. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Andriola.
I was just going to make a comment that, you know, we all, including Commissioner Clark, myself, and Commissioner Garcia, in November, you know, welcomed the opportunity for celebrating this. And also, Washoe County was awarded $21 million that Washoe County did not pay in terms of, you know, the Extension of the Home Means Nevada Initiative. So this is an expansion of that. So there is dollars that are actually coming into the county as public-private partnerships that aren't, you know, benefiting in the sense of Washoe County paying a developer. People are paying or contributing to the project with, in this case, almost $22 million. So I just wanted to put that in perspective, that there are dollars that are coming in from development that Washoe County is not expending out of its budget, that I think help balance, to your question.
Thank you. Again, there are certain developers that are going to be builders, contractors, that are going to be making the lion's share of that $22, $23 million that being tax dollars that are coming from, whether it's the federal government or Home Means Nevada, or wherever they're coming from. Somebody's going to profit from this. And it'd be nice to have something that made a little more economic sense before we sign a lease. But you'll do what you want to do. I'm going to be opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Madam Chair, is there any public comment on this item?
There is none.
Okay. With that, I am happy to make the motion to adopt Resolution R. 2413 to execute the amendment to the ground lease between Washoe County and Accessible Space for the development of approximately 120 units of affordable housing, including 50 units of supportive housing on a portion of the Nevada CARES campus, as outlined in the staff report. Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And again, just to reiterate the comment of it not actually impacting and benefiting in many ways. And the risk part of that, I think, is well worth the investment. And being able to get additional funding from outside is welcome. So I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. With a motion and a second, any other comments from the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Commissioner Herman, I need your vote.
And that motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. We will now move to item 5D3. Commissioner Garcia, you pulled that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this agenda item outlines two different outreach events that will serve the children, adults, and seniors of District 3. The amount and the number of students listed in the packet need to be adjusted. So I was hoping that we can table the Sierra Nevada Journeys dispersment. But the second community event is right around the corner, and I'd like to move forward with that. I'm working with Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance and Bernice Matthews Elementary to put on a community bike ride on Saturday, May 18th. So I'd like to move to approve $5,000 dispersment to sponsor the TMB8 event.
Okay. I will second that. Any other Board discussion on that item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on that item?
There is none.
Okay. There is a motion and a second on 5D3. Any questions from the Board? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes four to one. Okay. And we will now move to our block vote. Madam Vice Chair, do you have a block vote?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Number six and seven, and that's a motion.
Thank you very much, and I will second that. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on six or seven?
There is none.
Okay. There is a motion and a second on the block vote for six and seven. Any questions from the Board? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Who was the second, or?
Was I? I think I was. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes, I did. Okay. And it's on your screens now. All right, that motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to item eight. Mr. Manager.
Item eight is a recommendation to nominate at least two candidates from the list of applicants, which include Leximi Albright, Tyler Henderson, who is the incumbent, Brian Urbis, Micheline, I'm sorry, Fairbank, Donnie Simpson, Faustino Asalbo Jr., Daniel Lazarreschi, Guy Archer, Peter Menicusim, I think is how you say that, Christopher Kaporin, to serve as the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District to represent Washoe County for a four-year term effective upon the appointment by the governor.
Great.
And I apologize if I butchered anybody. Really sorry.
Let me give you a hard job there. Do we have a staff member to help us with this?
Hello?
Hello.
Alexandra Wilson, for the record. Sorry for the delay. I was running down here. So in front of you, you have the appointment for the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District. This one is slightly different, as you can appoint at least two members, sorry, for that appointment to go to the governor's office, of which he will make the official appointment. You have one of which, who is the incumbent, which is listed on, one of which is listed on your ballot. And then the other, I believe, eight applicants are listed as well. And they'll be passing up the ballot right now.
And then, do you want us to choose our two choices? Okay, great. And if we choose to only send one name to the governor's office, can that be done too, or they ask for two?
They ask for at least two.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for helping us with this. And do we have any public comment on this item? I'm sorry. I know you're up over here. None, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia, would you give me your two top picks, please?
Yes, incumbent Tyler Henderson and Micheline Fairbank, please.
Okay. Commissioner, or Chairwoman Alexis Hill chose Micheline Fairbank and Tyler Henderson. Commissioner Clark chose Guy Archer and Donna Simpson. Commissioner Andriola selected Micheline Fairbank and Tyler Henderson. And Commissioner Herman selected Micheline Fairbank and Daniel Lazarreschi.
Okay. So it seems like our top vote-getters are Micheline Fairbank and Tyler Henderson. I am looking for a motion to that effect. Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. I will second it. Any questions on that motion from the Board? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move to item nine. Mr. Manager.
Item nine is a recommendation to appoint one candidate from a pool of applicants, including Philip Jillenfarre, James McNamara, Judith Simon, who is the incumbent, Tracy Thomas, to serve as the lay member to the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency's Advisory Planning Commission for a two-year term effective upon the date of appointment.
Thank you very much. I see we have public comment, but Ms. Wilson, if you'll just lead us into how you want us to do this vote.
Absolutely. Alexandra Wilson, for the record. So I did want to note on the applicants, Mr. Jillenfarre was listed accidentally. We did receive his application, but it was after the application period had closed. So the pool of applicants includes James McNamara, Judith Simon, the incumbent, and Tracy Thomas. And so you'll select your top. I do have the ballots here, although because there are so little applicants, it might just be best to bring forward the top one or who you would recommend as you do sit on the Tahoe Regional to bring forward the top one or who you would recommend as you do sit on the Tahoe Regional Planning Governing Board, I believe. And then we can move forward from there. But I do have the ballots if you guys want to move forward with that as well.
Great. I think you're probably right. We may not need them for this one, but we'll let you know. So we'll call up public comment and then we'll have our deliberation. Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Judith Simon, followed by Jim McNamara.
Thank you, Commissioners. I wanted to introduce myself. I haven't been here for several years, but I think it, one thing I want to note is I think it's very important to have a laymember on this particular committee to give a practical voice to the various planners, firefighters, and other professionals that constitute this committee. I've lived in Washoe County in the Lake Tahoe area for more than 20 years, and my service on the Incline Village Crystal Bay Citizens Advisory Board has helped me really keep a pulse on that community. The complexity of the agency, workforce housing, and fire safety, and all of these other issues that are discussed means that it does take a little bit of time to figure out the, both the players and what they're doing, so I would like to be reappointed. And I think you know this, but it does span two states and five counties, so I'd like to continue if I, if you would reappoint me. And I do live in Commissioner Hill's District, District 1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim McNamara?
Thank you. Jim McNamara, I've come before you several times to offer myself to be on several different commissions or committees, unsuccessful possibly because of my advanced age, I don't know. But I offer myself for this position. I do have some subject matter expertise. I've hiked, built, and trod on the Tahoe Rim Trail for the last 20 years. I've done an awful lot of work with other agencies, and I really understand, I think, the spirit of this area, of the Tahoe. I've built and remodeled four different residences there. I've interacted with TRPA. I know some of the trials and tribulations that homeowners and developers go through up there, but I also understand the spirit of what's worth preserving there. So that's what I offer. I've worked well with other agencies up there as a citizen, and I really understand what it's about up there with both the residents, developers, and agencies. So if I can offer my expertise, I look forward to it. I want to thank you for trying to staff all the positions that are open in this county with active citizens. I think it's going to be a huge payoff for this county. There's an awful lot of talent out here, a lot of people that don't come forward, but I think every time you do fill positions, you're making a great attempt to include those citizens. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's nobody else signed in.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Well, as your representative for many boards at Lake Tahoe, I'd like to recommend Ms. Judith Simon to stay in this position. These are very complex zoning issues, land use issues, and I feel like it takes some time to learn all of it. And also, I think she's done a wonderful job, you know, ensuring that the citizens are represented. So that is my recommendation. Mr. McNamara, I'm so sorry if it's not ageist at all. Please continue to apply. It takes a while for folks to get on these boards. I wish we had more citizen volunteer opportunities, and please continue to stay engaged. But that is my recommendation to the board, and I will make a motion to that effect. I'm looking for a second.
Second?
I'm sorry.
Are you just going to make?
Yeah.
So you're just making the appointment, but we don't get to choose? I'm just asking for clarification.
No, that's fine. If you want to do the ballot, so Ms. Wilson has a ballot for us. We can definitely do a ballot, if you want to do that.
May I request that we do a ballot, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries, no worries. As the person that made the motion, I will take it off the table until we do the ballot. So, no, my apologies.
I misunderstood.
That's all good.
I would like the incumbent, Judith Simon, please.
Okay. Chair Hill chose Judith Simon. Commissioner Andriola, James McNamara. Commissioner Clark, James McNamara. Commissioner Herman, James McNamara.
Okay, well then, I'm looking for a new motion.
Second?
Any questions on the motion? Seeing none. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Nay.
Nay.
Okay, and that motion passes three to two. Congratulations, Mr. McNamara. Okay, we are now moving into item 10. Madam Clerk?
I believe, I'll take that one, Madam Chair, since it's a first reading.
Okay, thank you.
It's an introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Washoe County Code Chapter 2 by adopting Supplement 18 to the Washoe County Code, and will, and all clerical and technical corrections made therein. And if supported, set the public hearing for second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance on April 16, 2024. If passed, Supplement 18 will codify ordinances 1627, which in the building code, 1674, adoption of Supplement 15, 1694, which is Affordable Housing Trust Fund, 1695, which is the Personnel Code, and 1697, Building Program, 1698, Traffic, 1699, Adoption of Supplement 16, and 1701, Adoption of Supplement 17, 1707, Sideshow and Street Racing, 1707, Registration of Lobbyists, and 1708, Variance Permits. This supplement does not include amendments to the Washoe County Development Code, Chapter 110, which is published separately from the General Washoe County Code, Washoe County Code.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This will be Bill Number 1907.
1907, thank you. Any questions from the board before I look for, look to public comment on this item? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
I hit the button.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Clark. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've, I thought we were kind of done with the registration of lobbyist. I guess we're getting back into that. Is this a?
No, this is more, I'll have the DA's office kind of explain it, but this is more of a clerical thing that the board has to do to adopt new ordinances, so DA Canderas.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Again, for the record, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. This, this proposed ordinance is required by the Washoe County Code. It's basically set forth in Washoe County Code 2.060, which says that the district attorney shall from time to time prepare a supplement to the code, which consists of, consists of, excuse me, ordinances already passed. It's kind of an old, it's kind of a throwback to when we had books. So you have all passed about six ordinances here, and in the old days, we'd put that into a book and it would say Supplement 16. So that would be all the new ordinances are now officially part of the Book of Codes. And now we do it on computer, but the, like I said, the Washoe County Code still requires it. So the lobbyist one, we're not changing it. It's already been enacted in the way this body enacted it. It's just now official. Does that make sense?
Sure. And again, I wanted it on the record for when people ask me about this, I can tell them what you told me. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other board questions or comments on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, any public comment?
There's none.
Okay. Looking for a motion to introduce and conduct the first reading. It's 1907.
Madam Chair, I'll move to introduce and conduct the first reading of Bill Number 1907, which is an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 2, by adopting Supplement 18 to the Washoe County Code, and all clerical and technical corrections made therein. And if supported, set the public hearing for second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance on April 16, 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. All right, we will now move to our public hearing for the day. Item 11. Madam Clerk?
This will be ordinance number 1715, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 50, Public Peace, Safety, and Morale, and Chapter 70, Vehicles and Traffic, by adding new sections regarding camping on county-owned property or public places within 1,000 feet of the Truckee River, 50.400, use of fires, blowtorches, and/or propane tanks, 50.500, parking of oversized vehicles on county-owned property or public places, 70.391, obstructive uses of public sidewalks, roads, and/or highways prohibited, 70.392, riot solicitation and contribution from driver occupant of vehicle prohibited, 70.393, human habitation of vehicles on county-owned property or public places, 70.411, and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. It was formerly Bill Number 1904.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Chair Hill, Vice Chair Herman, members of the commission, Corey Solfren, on behalf of Sheriff Balaam, representing the men and women of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present before you today. I'm going to take a little bit different approach from the first reading and address some of the issues that came up today in addition, and the thoughts and considerations and conversations that we've had since the first reading. I want to thank Chastity, I want to thank Lisa, I want to thank Douglas, and everybody else that came up to talk about this very complex topic that obviously pulls at the heartstrings of everybody. I said in our first reading that I got uncomfortable, that I got comfortable rather having uncomfortable conversations, and I think we have to, to be able to make systemic changes in this area. You've seen law enforcement have paradigm shifts of cataclysmic proportions since the early '70s to what we're doing today. And I really want to commend this body, this Board of County Commissioners, County Management, and Sheriff Balaam, for what we're doing to address some of the other issues. We've talked about housing. We've talked about the lack of affordable housing. We've talked about criminalizing homelessness. And I want to make some assertions as you today about what we're doing here in Washoe County, so that's not the case. 16 months ago, we did work in a collaboration across the board. Then it was under Chair Hartung that asked us to come together, to meet with stakeholders, to have this conversation when we initially brought this ordinance together. And we, we've done that. From my conversations that we've had down in Carson City for years on end, when I represented the sheriff during Carson City, this is what we do to correct change. We're not saying that it's perfect, but it's consistent across the region. And that's what we're trying to do, is gain consistency with what's happening in the cities of Reno's and Sparks. We want to balance public health. We want to balance public safety, and we want to balance public order. Our goal's not to incarcerate. I cannot make that statement clear enough. Our goal is not to incarcerate. When I produced the stats from our Wonderful Hope team from the last year and have the stats updated for the last month, you can see unequivocally that our goal is not to incarcerate, that our team is out there connecting services to individuals because there is not a one-size-fits-all approach. We know that we can't warehouse people, nor do we want to. Cares Campus isn't for everybody. But one of the wonderful things that this leader has done behind me, Lieutenant Daniel, in her promotion just recently, in taking over the Hope team and continuing to supervise that, is connecting service providers and individuals. So what we've done is, since our inception of the Hope team, we've pulled it over into the Detention Services Unit, because we understand that our unhoused population, our indigent population in the jail, when they have no place to go, they by de facto become homeless. And we want to make sure that we're connecting people and that discharge planning on the outside. Our promise to the community through our draft policy and implementation is that we will not over-incarcerate. The policy that's incorporated in the body of this, while I not be able to say what a misdemeanor is and isn't, a misdemeanor is our lowest action of crime that we can have on the books. It is the lowest thing that we can do. Our officers have discretion right now to be able to write citations for misdemeanors, or they can give a verbal warning. There are five mandatory misdemeanors that we must, which we're commanded to, to arrest, but by and large, we are afforded a great amount of discretion. Basic speed on the books. I can pull you over for driving one mile, one mile an hour over the speed limit and write you a citation. Do we do that? Absolutely not. We're trying to correct the behavior. We're trying to help save lives, and that's what we're trying to do in this instance right here. So what 425 does in its draft provision, if you guys have that, it's on the agenda out in the public. 425.7 is the enforcement piece. That is our promise to the community of how we're going to enforce this. If you look at it, it's a four-pronged approach, where the last approach isn't a "shall," it's a "may" arrest in certain circumstances. It's a warning. It's a connection to services and discharge planning. It's a written warning. It's a actual citation cited into community court. Judge Haslett Stevens has been a wonderful model for community court within this region and across the country, as he visits different places to try to enhance and support those services. Judge Kendra Burchie is a good personal friend of mine and former lobbyist down in Carson City. She and I have had conversations about bringing something similar to like this within the Reno Justice Court, so we're not having to lean heavily on the Reno Municipal Court in order to do so, although we have provided a pathway to do it specifically for this ordinance to connect people to services. This has been on the books in Sparks since 2016. Since 2016, we have not seen a drastic increase in our detention population. They've used the ordinance five times to make an arrest, five times since 2016. While I don't have the numbers for the Reno Police Department, a quick text while we were in this commission meeting indicates that they have made zero arrests for this ordinance within the last 12 months. Regionalization and consistency across is key. And working with the district attorney's office and DA Chris Hicks, he agrees with us that the regionalization piece and the consistency piece is key. We are the one missing cog in what's happening right now. During the first reading, I did talk about the displacement of services, that the one thing that it's done with the different jurisdictions that you have, from Union Pacific to BLM, to the cities of Reno and Sparks, is it's displaced our unhoused population beyond that service provider corridor. So we further pushed them out into the unincorporated area of Washoe County. We want to bring those services back in and provide a pathway for housing. In conversations with the PD's office, I know that the commissioners are in support of a letter, not in support, in opposition from the APD and the PD's office. I have had conversations with the public defender about this, and while I thought we were on the same page, they're looking at it through a different lens. But in looking at the other jurisdictions, I don't see the increases in what they're talking about to their caseloads or to our, to our jailed population. Our three-pronged approach for housing in this community, I think, is starting with our behavioral health issues. And I really want to commend this board for our new Behavioral Health Director. I think that's the key. Also, our co-occurring disorders and our counseling services. I sat before this board in 2019 when we were down in Carson City, presenting what the fiscal impacts would be of AB 236 and the criminal justice reform. The state didn't want to build another billion-dollar prison. So by redesigning what we were doing in the criminal justice system and hiring some thresholds and taking some crimes off the books, we're promised a $755 million reinvestment in our community. And that's what we're missing right now, right? We're missing those counseling services. We're missing the discharge planning. We're missing those wraparound services. But what we have seen from that AB 236 piece is while the prisons might be getting a little bit lighter, our jail population is growing, because a lot of those crimes have been pushed down from the felony level to the gross misdemeanor and misdemeanor level, and it has had a inverse proportionate effect to our, to our jail population. So I will say here again, proportionate effect to our jail population. So I will say here again, we do not want to incarcerate. We want to provide a pathway and push towards services. Some people simply aren't ready for housing, and we want to make sure that they get the ability to be reformed. I guess I could say in our interview with KUNR the other day, there is something beautiful, unfortunately, coming out of a bad situation. When somebody does commit a crime and they do get arrested, and we get them stabilized, and we get them into our OTP program, or we get them to see our behavioral health psychologist, and we get them balanced on their medication, and you see the light come on and you see that turnaround. That is a beautiful thing. We need to continue that pathway out the doors of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office into the community. And I think that we can do that with this piece. We've done a lot, but we've got more work to do. There's a lot more work to do. I'm happy to announce that next month, we'll be presenting to you our jail-based competency program. It's no secret that the Washoe County Detention Facility is the second-largest mental health facility in the state, next to the Clark County Detention Facility. So the state has awarded us a grant, if you will, for personnel and for services to work on our jail-based competency program. So those people aren't sitting in jail waiting for a spot at Lakes that may or may not come six, eight, 12 months down the road. So I'm happy to present that to the board coming up in probably next month's staff report. Another wonderful thing that Lieutenant Daniel did two weeks ago is we connected and got all of these service providers that are all intimate with this knowledge and with this population, to talk about what different people do so we can find that right service provider for each individual constituent and make sure that we get them the right services that they need. And it's breaking down those silos, not holding on to programs and having those courageous conversations to be able to connect those services. So I think we're on the right path. Commissioner, your last first reading, you spoke about a community outreach program similar to what our CERT model was. Doug, excellent public speaker in here. I had the opportunity after his conversation to go out and talk to him in the hallway. I didn't realize it, but Doug and I go way back. When I was the District Court Sergeant down at District Court in 2016, Doug was unhoused at the time. And he and I came into contact. We also reunited once again during the Reno riots when we were down there defending the courthouse and our property and our citizens and making sure. So Doug has agreed to be a champion for that model and to work with us in concert to develop that community outreach. If there's anything that Sheriff Balaam and our community is amazing at doing, is coming together and volunteer work. We've done it with our search and rescue program. We've done it with our community emergency response team. And I'm confident that we can do it with this homeless outreach program and volunteer work. Lastly, before I hand it off to Lieutenant Daniel for just a quick comment before we answer any questions, I wanted to go over the stats just one more time because I think it's important what we are doing, that community work and the update that we've done since the first reading. So from January 2023 to January 2024, our Hope team did 89 civil assists and patrol. You spoke, you heard from speakers today that talked about possible evictions. When we have evictions out within our sheriff's office and people have no place to go, a lot of times, our civil department will contact Hope in order to come out there to see if they have resources. So while somebody is getting evicted from their property, we're making sure that they're not out on the streets. So we're trying to connect them to an open door and someplace to stay. Individuals housed include Safe Camp 158. Over 1,005 contacts made. Over 943 accepted resources. That's over 94%. And we've seen that consistently across this team's two-year-plus run. We issued zero citations. We made six arrests regarding felony warrants and crimes related to arson and fires. We diverted over 51 individuals to CARES, our place, temporary shelters or bus passes to family members where we connected with somebody on the other line to make sure that there was somebody on the other end that could care for that individual when they arrived. Something that we're newly tracking within the fall of last year, Nevada IDs, we helped 20 people secure their IDs. And we helped 32 individuals obtain their social security cards or documentation for social security. I'm going to talk about briefly the elephant in the room and some of the things that are going on within these homeless encountments that we're not talking about, and some of the hierarchy, some of the crimes, the sexual assaults, the batteries, the violent crime going on. And unfortunately, this population, because of other things going on within their past or within their history, aren't mandatory reporters, don't want to call, don't want to report it. But we know that it's going on. And with that, I want to hand it off to Lieutenant Daniel real quick to just talk about one short story that kind of sums that up for us. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Nice to see all of you. So what Chief Deputy Sulfarino is speaking about with the crimes is we do have an individual. We've been working with him since 2021. He's an amazing man. We've got pretty close to him. We've helped him get housed. He has a little bit of anxiety, so he ended up going back into homelessness. He does have a dog or he had a dog. Recently, as of March 8th, we were notified that he was beaten very badly, put in the hospital, and his dog was stabbed to death. This is a dog that we've all actually become very close with. I bring him toys all the time, just an amazing little family that he had there. He does not want to talk to anybody. I'm actually going to go see him soon. He is afraid to talk to anybody. And in case he needs to go back out there, we have now got him housed. We've worked very closely with his Medicaid provider, and we have great relationships with them, with all the Medicaid providers. So that's helped us tremendously in our efforts. So that is just one of the situations that we have dealt with just recently. So this is, we want to help everybody, but unfortunately, there's some individuals out there that are also victimizing other homeless individuals. If it's okay, I just wanted to briefly say some of the things that Chief Deputy Sulfarino had talked about, some of the things that we, I want to make sure that you all understand is we worked very closely. Recently, we have some pieces, and I know this was one of the things from last time. Some of the pieces that we've now put into place, we hear and understand that we have a long ways to go. We have a Detention Services Unit who now works directly with the courts. We are working with getting people housed, bus tickets, reunited with their families. They're working really well with Judge Walker for the mental health piece. We're also trying to get one of the individuals SOAR certified, which is going to be also the in-house piece for the jail in order to get them, continue those efforts with social security cards, navigate the application process for people that need SSDI in order to get housed when they get out there. The two case managers that we currently have, they're the only two case managers boots on the ground. They are there every Wednesday at Community Court. So not only are we sending those people when they do get cited, now they have that link there at Community Court and a familiar face. They also go on Thursdays if they need to in order to continue those services every Thursday. So they have the stand-in appointments on Thursday morning with Social Security Office, and they have stand-in appointments with the DMV in order to get IDs. So this robust relationship that we're building with our community just continues to grow. And I am always welcome to talk to anybody after this to provide the information that we have for these new regional collaboration meeting efforts that we're going to continue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. We have quite a few public commenters as well, but I'm looking to the board. Do we want to have some board discussion before we bring a public comment? Okay. All right. Yes, Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, I signed in after you were probably looking the other way.
I'm looking at the speaker list. I don't see you sign in, but go on.
I would like to, I'd like to hear a little bit more from Corey Sulfarino, I hope I'm pronouncing the last name right, about what the, he said there was some, a little difference of opinion with the public defender and the public defender's position and the alternate public defender's position. I'd like to hear, you don't have to be their spokesperson, but if you shared with us what their concerns were. Thank you.
Chair Hill, Corey Sulfarino, for the record, to Commissioner Clark. I don't want to speak on behalf of what they alleged in their report. Obviously, we worked extensively with DA Hicks and his team. We disagree that it's unconstitutional in its application, that there are certain provisions through the Ninth Circuit that, you know, allow us to look into what the sheltered, our homeless shelter is population at before we can take enforcement efforts. We're in compliance with that. DA Hicks agrees with that and his team, but I'd have to defer to the District Attorney in order to speak to the legality of it. But we're just looking at it through a different lens. We would not push something forward that we believed on its face value was unconstitutional.
Sure, sure. And I understand that. And I just thought you could give an overview of what their concerns are. So with that, now I think that I need to hear from the public defender's office just to get their perspective on it. And I think it'd be fair to have, fair and balanced to have their representative here to explain their position. I think the Commissioner should hear that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions or comments before we hear from public commenters? Not seeing any. So Madam Clerk, if you'll bring a public comment. Thanks.
First up, we have Reverend Claire Novak, followed by Matthew Wilkie.
Good afternoon. Good to be with you again, Reverend Claire Novak, Free United for Action and Faith in Action Nevada. Want to thank Chief Deputy Sulfarino, Lieutenant Daniels, all of you for opening your ears and your hearts to this issue. As you know, you heard this morning, Faith in Action Nevada opposes the proposed ordinance on very fundamental grounds. We've written up a summary of that, and I'll put that in the public record. Many of those points were covered. I just want to cover three of the big ones. We just heard about this question of constitutionality. And I'll say that according to that Ninth Circuit Court decision, it is unconstitutional to arrest or cite someone with no access to alternative shelter. And we know that many rural and unincorporated areas of Washoe County have no shelter or housing options for people who are camping by necessity, that is simply trying to survive outdoors and on the streets. So passing this ordinance as written directly exposes the county to legal action if no shelter or housing option is available at the time and in the area a person is cited. You may know that the U.S. Supreme Court is taking up this issue in April, April 22nd, in a hearing testimony on the case that is called Johnson versus Grants Pass. So I'd suggest that it would not be wise to move ahead on this ordinance as written, given that this is going to be heard and litigated on at the highest level in this country. Second point is, we would like to see more data about why service-resistant unhoused residents are refusing county services they're offered. For example, what were the services offered? Were they appropriate for that person? What was the quality of the services? Were they easily available? And most importantly, did they lead to a legitimate pathway to permanent housing? We haven't heard that similar ordinances in Reno and Sparks are addressing the problem in a positive way. Or are they merely pushing this issue onto the county's doorstep? More data is needed. And finally, there's the issue of accountability. This ordinance has been written by those who will enforce it, and it lacks any process for independent review or accountability. So I'd suggest that regular independent review of this ordinance must hold the sheriff's office accountable for proving that this ordinance helps solve homelessness rather than worsens it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Wilkie, followed by Simona Visani.
Good afternoon, Chair Hill, members of the committee. Typically, when I come here in front of your body, I have a whole speech prepared, written out, and everything prepared to go. But I'm just going to talk to you for a little bit. I want to bring up some things that were brought up by Officer Sulfarino and Lieutenant Daniels. Another thing we heard again is we cannot arrest our way out of this problem. Any ordinance that has a misdemeanor offense attached to it is criminalizing at the end of the day. We heard Sheriff Officer Daniels brought up the DMV aspect. It is great that they're bringing them to the DMV, helping to get them licenses and this and that. It is kind of ironic that we are then turning around and wanting to criminalize these same individuals that are trying to get up on their feet for sleeping in that same vehicle that they just got a license for. It's kind of ironic. Something else I'd want to bring up, something that people bring to me is, Matt, why do you care about this issue so much? You're doing very well. Something I don't talk about very often is, we are all one step away from that experience. And I have lived that experience. My first home here in Nevada was a 1988 Ford Thunderbird. I was very fortunate to be taken in by a family in Sparks, out in Wingfield Springs, that gave me an opportunity to go to school. I now have a very successful pharmacy career, and I'm doing very well for myself. But this, ordinances like this, are going to prevent people from being in that same position I am. So think about that. And this is not the way to do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Simona Visani, followed by Janet Butcher.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here again, so I'm not stating my name, my beliefs, and all that. I haven't changed my mind. The only thing I wanted to ask you again is the same questions I asked, the same question I asked you before. Who is a criminal? Is he a killer with vicious and evil mind? Or is he a person who sleeps in the park because he doesn't have a place to go to at night? I wish, but before you make your decision, you think about your own answer to this question. And what I can tell you is, may God be with you and guide you in the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Chastity Martinez.
Janet Butcher, for the record. Please enter my comments into the minutes verbatim. I really want to thank the Sheriff's Department. They did a very nice job in presenting everything. And it, I think, put a lot of clarity to it. I do believe that there's some good services out there. I would like to see the monetary amount taken away because I have to agree with the fact that if you don't have the money to get yourself into a place, how do you have the money to get yourself out of jail? So, but anyway, I think it's an extremely complex issue. You have on the one hand where like the gentleman got up earlier and spoke about Mr. Martin and spoke about, what about the people, you know, wanting to take their kids to the park or go down by the river or do anything like that? And as the one, I think it was Ms. Daniels from the Sheriff's Department, talked about some of the issues with having some of the homeless beating up on the other homeless or hurting the other homeless and stuff. So it's a complex situation, and I wish you luck in trying to decide what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chastity Martinez, followed by Nathaniel Phillips.
Good afternoon, Chair and County Commissioners. Chastity Martinez with Faith in Action Nevada for the record. And I just want to say, start by saying that I know the Hope team does help people. And I know we've had a lot of conversations with the Chief Deputy and their team for the last several months. And this conversation isn't about if the Hope team is good at their job or able to help people. It's about this ordinance that criminalizes people for camping, for sleeping in their vehicles, for sleeping along the river, all these other behaviors, not even behaviors, all the other situations, really. And I believe that if you want to write a law to impact the behaviors you're seeing, or the bullying, or the violence, whatever the situation is, you can write ordinances that target those specific behaviors. But what we have here is just a very broad camping ordinance. And, you know, I can't stress this enough that, you know, I met with someone last week from the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness and told her the same things that we were told by the sheriff's office and the Hope team. And even that information is just, it's not best practice to move forward on something like this. It's proven to be ineffective to force people to get services. What has been proven effective is Housing First, is having multi-agency outreach. So having outreach that is led by people with lived experience and social workers. No matter what you do, some folks are just not going to trust someone in a uniform, someone that's law enforcement, no matter what. And so to expect that, you know, this is going to be something that gets passed and get people into housing, which we know there's a lack of in the community already, it just isn't, it just isn't logical. It's really wishful thinking. And, you know, I think that, yeah, again, we appreciate, you know, the conversation we all have, but it just doesn't make sense to pass this. It's research proven that it wouldn't work. And it would only cause more harm to people. So we're concerned about the unintended consequences of this, and just still encourage you to vote against it, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathaniel Phillips, followed by Aspen Murillo. Nathaniel Phillips followed by Aspen Murillo.
Thank you, Nathaniel Phillips, for the record. Thank you for indulging. Multiple comments, a lot was said. There's been very colorful comments made today. I'll try and be cogent and concise. But first and foremost, people are dying. People die on the streets of Washoe County because of the negligence of both the broader community that we are all a part of, and because of the negligence of public officials. It is not, y'all didn't start the problem, nor does the buck stop with this commission or the Washoe County Sheriff's Department. Fundamentally, it begins from the top of the state down. None of the counties do it well, so Washoe's not unique there. We could be unique in not implementing a nonsensical ordinance. Even the American Public Health Association, the largest association of public health workers in the United States, this is a professional organization, professional association, with bylaws, commissioners. I myself am a community health worker, one of the first cohorts in the state of Nevada. They themselves have called for minimizing interactions between police officers and the general public. Why? Police engage in violence work. I know we don't want to believe it or want to see it. I know we hear things like it doesn't show up in the data, but it does. Not only is an unhoused person 16 times more than any one of us who I assume is not going home to lay their head in a tent on the ground somewhere tonight, are 16 times more to be assaulted or a victim of crime, they're also 11 times more likely to end up criminalized or incarcerated. So again, as people have said, it does not make sense to solve an issue that we all purport to care about, houselessness, with a criminal sanction. It literally does not make sense. Also, it doesn't make sense, as the law enforcement just said, that they don't intend, there have been no, people are not being arrested or cited for this. Then why do we need the ordinance? Why do we need the ordinance to potentially violate people's constitutional rights, to potentially pace lawsuits, to potentially have another UN special repertoire, not that that matters to anyone, come in to cry how nonsensical Nevada treats its most vulnerable? So the last thing I'll say, Housing First, Care First, Jail Last, these are evidence-based solutions that communities across the country are doing. Wake up! If you want to make effective, productive policy and have a legacy that isn't throwing people on the street and letting them die there, or get picked up by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, do something that actually makes sense. So really, take it to the Capitol, because it's our legislators who are dropping the ball. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aspen Murillo.
Good afternoon. My name is Aspen. I'm back up here. I just want to reiterate, I live in District One and I work in District Three. And I want to talk about some of the things that were brought up by the Hopes team. So I work in downtown Reno off of Center Street, and we have people that sleep outside of our building every night because we have a covered patio. And as long as they pick up after themselves and don't interfere with the business, they have been allowed to do so. However, we have had the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, Hope Team, park their car in our parking lot, and let our two receptionists every morning go out and ask these people to move while they sit in their truck. And they let two female receptionists that are like under 150 pounds to deal with the issue that they say they need this ordinance to deal with. And that's just been my personal experience with the Hopes team. I'm not saying that they don't do what, all of the great things that they came to say they do, but I don't understand why they need this ordinance when we, as a business, have asked for help, and we still get to deal with the problem while they just kind of watch and wait for something to happen before they intervene. I also want to point out, I'm a little disappointed that nobody except for Commissioner Clark had any comments or questions for the Hopes team. I've gotten forwarded all of these emails about responses and how y'all's concerns echo our concerns, and y'all want to bring up the same issues to the Hopes team. And then when they're here standing before you, only one person has anything to ask them or to comment on. I find that very discouraging as far as being represented by our elected officials. And lastly, the comment I want to make is, once you take away people's things, they aren't going to come to you when they are victimized. So the ideas about all of the violence that's happening within the homeless population, I do think that is valid and a concern, and that is actual criminal activity. However, once you take away somebody's shelter and all of their belongings, why should they trust you and come to you for help? Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in, but I did receive emails that I will place on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to listen to everybody out there and hear what you had to say. Is that going? Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I'm not having a hard time with this. I'm just wanting to make sure we do the right thing. And number one, if there was a safe place, or a place that people could temporarily, with oversight, have their cars safe in a safe lot, in the evening, you know, when you go to sleep, so you're safe, without having all the problems that seem to happen, because I've heard so many horror stories, oh my gosh, mostly women that have been abused out there, because there's not a safe place, including the CARES campus, that's a trustworthy place to be. If we had a safe place for people, it would be not necessary to have this bill. But I can't approve of it. There's got to be another way to get, I don't know why we haven't come up with a better idea to take care of an alternate kind of place that is safe. Used to be, in the old days, there was churches, and they would take people in and help them get a leg up. And everybody in their own way tries to do that, but we have a huge problem. And I know that everybody in their own way is trying to figure out the perfect solution. But I don't think making them subject to maybe becoming a victim, or becoming a criminal because we have too strict of rules. So there's got to be something in between. So today is not my day to vote for item 11.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Looking to Commissioner Andriola.
And years ago, I'm sorry.
No, go on.
Years ago, when people came west, they would have been pioneers if they kept by the river. So that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Andriola.
I have a couple of questions for Chief Deputy Solferino, and possibly for Lieutenant Daniel as well. May I?
Absolutely.
So I'm wondering if you could actually answer the question about, we've heard in various ways that there already is provisions that are given to law enforcement that could address this, and that, if that's one part of my question, and the second is, is that why do we even have this if really the intent isn't to criminalize homelessness?
Chair Hill, Corey Solferino for the record. I guess I need a little bit more clarification on the first piece, because I'm unaware of what we have currently on our disposal. Are you talking about for the additional crimes that we talked about during the first reading?
Yeah, I'm not sure. There's just been public comments saying that there already are some things to enforce, various, I'll use the term truly criminal activity, versus actually adopting an ordinance that is perceived to be criminalizing homelessness.
Certainly.
So I'm just wondering if you can clarify that, because if there already is provisions, then I'm wondering why we're seeing this? And then, you know, you have made it clear, and I think everyone has heard that really loudly, about the intent isn't to criminalize homelessness, and that there are some legal parameters. I brought it up during the first reading and asked for legal clarification on why you have to actually use the word misdemeanor in that. So maybe just expanding on that would be helpful.
Sure. Chair Hill, through you, to the Commissioner, Corey Solferino, for the record. I can't speak to everything that was spoken in here, but what I'm assuming that they mean are other crimes. Well, misdemeanors are very specific in the sense that it's our lowest level of crime. There's only five misdemeanors that I can arrest for that are not committed in my presence. So when we may hear about a battery, if we didn't see it happen, unless they come forward and there's a uncooperated witness that could come and testify to that, I can't make that arrest or citation for the battery. The only arrests that I can do for that are DUI for domestic battery, for hit-and-run, stalking harassment, and the fifth one escapes me for the moment. I might have to defer to my DA friends. But those are, those are the only ones where that exception to crimes committed in our presence that we can make an arrest or citation in that effect. So while a lot of these things could be happening, unless we have an officer standing in that encampment, looking, watching, observing, they can't take that enforcement piece. This gives the homeless outreach teams an opportunity to use it as a tool. And that's what we're seeing, what's happening with the Hopes team in Sparks. That's what we see what's happening with the Hopes team in Reno Police Department, is they have a tool at which to use with their disposal, that we have a pathway for community court to connect people to resources. Sometimes people need intervention. Sometimes people need assistance. This is a tool by which we can use to push people towards that service piece. And the commitment that I gave to Faith in Action, that we worked with for the body of almost 16 months, was that policy that we enacted, that if granted, is our promise to the community about how we're going to do that. Our promise to the community, when they change pieces down of legislation in Carson City, is our policy manual. That's what we're bound by. That's what the sheriff and our legal counsel look at, that protects the sheriff's office, that protects public interests, that protects public's rights. And that's what we hold and compel our deputies to, so they know what to do in any given situation. This is the policy of the sheriff's office. So for that piece there, I think one thing that we could do additionally to get the board's support and/or the board's, well, support, is quarterly, that we already have a mechanism by which we report to the BCC regarding what's happening in our detention facility, regardless of whether or not it's programming, whether it's services, what have you. In that fourth quarter report, we could have a provision in there where we're presenting back to the board our enforcement piece. Just last week, the sheriff released his State of the Sheriff's Office. I envision this is another statistic that we're going to keep within the body about how many times we actually use this ordinance, how many times we made an arrest, how many times we issued a citation, that we will have fully transparent to the public, to on our webpage and our State of the Sheriff's Office, and reporting to this body annually during our fourth quarter report.
Thank you. May I have a follow-up, please? One of the gentlemen spoke specifically about looking at the balance and cited, actually, 425.7 as an opportunity to include it in the ordinance. And I wonder if, and for full transparency, I actually brought this point up to you.
Yes, ma'am.
That very, very point, when the gentleman brought it up. And I wonder if you could clarify, just with everybody, why that suggestion or recommendation, you know, was considered, and then why we're seeing it the way we're seeing it?
Chair Hill, through you, to the Commissioner, Corey Solferino, for the record. I think the easiest answer is, it's the law. I can't delineate how a misdemeanor is enforced. When we write what a misdemeanor is, what a gross misdemeanor is, what a felony is, that's why you see a up to six-month in jail part of a misdemeanor, an up to $500 fine. That's the threshold. That's not what we're going to do. That was not our intention, but that is the lowest level of enforcement piece that we can have on the books. I can't go and put into Washoe County code that you basically get four strikes. That was our compromise with the public and working with our stakeholders. We asked for their input. They were hesitant to put anything in writing or make any recommendations. So this was done based upon the body of work from the sheriff's office, from the Hope team, and what other successful jurisdictions are doing. Because again, our end result is not incarceration, but it is providing a pathway and a resource for our case management system, for community court, and for our Hope team, that are the ones that were created to address this issue through the county commission, through the manager's office, and we are extremely grateful for them. And what they're doing is to give them the tools that they need to succeed out there for these instances where we can and have an opportunity to intervene before tragedy strikes, before someone's dog is killed, before they're burned in a tent, before they're assaulted in an encampment, because crimes are going on that we can observe, and if we're not there, we can't take that enforcement piece. This provides us a proactive tool to be able to do so.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Clark.
I want to commend you in the work that you've done, when you gave the statistics about the different interactions you've had with the public, and arresting and sending people to wherever they might need to go. I'm having a real struggle with your, I don't know, Deputy Daniels, Lieutenant, is it? No?
Lieutenant Daniels, yes, sir.
When she said that somebody got beat up and their dog got stabbed, isn't it against the law currently to beat somebody up and put them in the hospital? Isn't it currently against the law to stab somebody's dog to death? So I mean, and I'm following your thoughts with, you have to be present and you have to see it before you can do anything with it. So some of these other laws that we have on the books are, it sounds like they're almost worthless if you don't see somebody urinating in the street, or defecating, or littering, or shoplifting, or intoxicated in public. If you don't see them, it didn't happen, it sounds like. It's like, I can go speed all day long on the freeway, and if you didn't catch me, it didn't happen. So that's what I've got a challenge with, is how do we, how do we see things like that? I mean, I see it all the time, and I'm not a deputy, so I can't do anything about it. But if there, you're never going to see it if you're not there. And so I'm always focusing about the CARES campus. And what I have at the CARES campus is, and this is just a fact, this is geographical fact, the county owns the CARES campus, but it's surrounded by the city of Reno's, it's in their jurisdiction. So you really don't have any jurisdiction to really enforce much around there. So, I mean, we've cobbled ourselves in such a way that lots of things don't get done. I'm just struggling with this. I want to use all the tools that are in the toolbox, before I want to give anybody a new tool. And that's where I am with this. Use the tools that are available, do what needs to be done, and before we get a new tool. So I'm struggling with this as well, and I'm also struggling with the fact that this is kind of tied into what might happen with the Grants Pass, a federal case that should be happening in the near future. And I don't know, maybe Ms. Canderas knows something about that. Maybe she's been tracking that, maybe give us an update. And I'm also concerned about the alternative public defender, and the public defender not being here to let us hear their side of the story. I mean, they need to be at the table as well. They're ultimately the folks that are going to, just based on exactly who we have, it's going to be the public defender and the alternative public defender defending these people, because they're indigent, because they're on the streets, because they don't have a house, because they don't have any assets. So they need to weigh in on what we should be doing before we make a logical decision. A prudent person wants to get all the facts before they vote on this, but maybe Ms. Canderas can tell us what, some procrastination, prognostication of what might be taking place up at Grants Pass. It's about, what, about 350 miles away from us, not that far away from us, so I'd like to hear from Ms. Canderas. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. And procrastination may be the answer here. I'm not going to tell you for sure, but the case is being argued in front of the Supreme Court. Typically, you'll see decisions before July 1st. One option, I'm confident that... One option, I'm confident that, that this, this ordinance and the ordinances presented are constitutional under the current state of the law. So I, I wanted to put that out there. To the extent that Grants Pass might affect that, I can't tell you what it would be. This board, they have the opportunity, if they wish, to continue the public hearing for a decision on that, if that is helpful. So like I said, I can't hazard a guess on what they're going to do, but I will tell you that the portions in front of you, we believe are constitutional under the current state of the law.
So we're in a gaming state and you don't want to, you don't want to give us some ideas?
I won't take that bet.
Very good. You don't want to handicap that outcome. However, I, I think that's a good alternative to, to, you know, you think it's legal today, but it might not be legal if, if that court ruling goes a different way. Again, but I still want to emphasize that the, the public defender, I like to hear from them and see what their, their story is as well. So I'm going to not be able to support it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Andreola?
I actually was going to ask this question and Commissioner Clark brought up something that prompted me to now ask it. So jurisdictionally, you know, the fact is, is that wherever you're at, whether you're in Reno or Sparks or in Washoe County proper, wherever it may be, it appears that Sparks has had a similar ordinance is what I had heard.
2016.
Since 2016 and then the city of Reno, I'm not sure how long that has been in place.
I'm not sure either, ma'am, but it's, it's been on for over a year. Both ordinances were already enacted when we came to the board initially in December of 2022. Sparks has gone through a series of revisions since. Sorry, Corey Solfrino for the record.
Those revisions that you just referred to, are those similar to what is currently being presented to, in the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Hill, through you, to the Commissioner Corey Solfrino for the record. Our goal is consistency across the region. So this most, and that was part of my, our stakeholder meetings with Faith in Action and with other community stakeholders, where the fact that I couldn't do a whole lot with the actual ordinance. The ordinance was the ordinance because we were striving for consistency across the board and fair and impartial policing across our jurisdiction. What I could afford them the opportunity was, was with our policy and how it would be enforced and how it would be enacted within the sheriff's office. And I think that's where we met the burden.
So as an example, the CARES campus was brought up and then it's surrounded by another jurisdiction. And so if something were to occur, there's not a consistency jurisdictionally then, is what?
The great thing happening, Commissioner, with, sorry, Corey Solfrino for the record, with the sheriff's office and the Washoe County Sheriff's Office is the fact that the cities of Reno and Sparks are within Washoe County. So by default, we have jurisdiction, we have off, we have police powers within the greater unincorporated area of Washoe County, including the city limits. Do we choose to enforce those ordinances or actions within those areas? No, we normally defer to the county of jurisdiction, city of jurisdiction, but we do have authority within that purview.
But giving jurisdictionally, having consistency is helpful, especially because all jurisdictions and talking to all of them are very clear that it really is about trying to provide paths and resources and connection to a solution of not incarceration as the first step.
Yes, ma'am.
So I really was pretty moved by the comment by Lisa Lee when she said, really, we need to come together to create collaborative solutions. And since, you know, becoming involved in this, I've certainly met with Faith in Action and met with folks, I've met with Grant Denton. We met with Faith in Action with Grant Denton and learned more than I ever thought, went on a ride along with the Hopes team and saw firsthand, I don't know how many of you have done that, but I'd encourage you to do that. But I think that coming together to create collaborative solutions really spoke to what I had brought up during the last time this came up, and that is, what I'm hearing is everybody really wants the same thing at a high level. And that's the success of trying to actually look at resources for folks and creating a path of success. And we've heard some of those stories. Mr. Wilkie's story is very moving and, you know, there's probably many other stories. Grant Denton's is also moving in the sense of him, with Faith in Action representatives are here in this room stating, had he not been arrested, he probably would not be in the position he's in. So everyone has a different course of being an individual and the decisions thereof, and also the treatment and resources that are available. And so to me, I thought literally, again, hearing that there's an opportunity for all of these folks who do great things in the community and the giving of time, energy, resources to help collaboratively feels like it should be a wonderful partnership. And I use the CERT team only as an example of a model that could actually come together to look at a solution. The other thing, and Reverend Claire Novak spoke to it, and I was really, again, moved about her point about accountability and independence and having that review. And so although you've been very forthright in giving an opportunity to report that information, the fact is, is that creating a model of a CERT team could actually do that. And you all could be on the front lines of making that accountability and holding what we're hearing and what they're doing as actually fact in the field with people and connecting everyone. There's all these resources in the community and a lot of nonprofits do this, and I certainly have some experience in that. Everyone's in their lane doing all these great work, but a lot of times people don't necessarily talk together and leverage those resources and leverage it together collectively. And I think having a model like the CERT team would be a great solution. For me, I really feel like not giving law enforcement the jurisdictional ability to work again across all Sparks and Reno is a bit of a hindrance. Listening to Grant Denton and spending hours speaking with him really has given me an opportunity to understand a lot of detail, specifically that the hierarchy within homelessness is not necessarily surprising, and I have never been homeless, but I'm talking to people who have. And there's a hierarchy and not giving law enforcement the ability, as Grant Denton puts it, to take the 1% and the 1% who are controlling the other 99% in those homeless hierarchies and not giving them the opportunity to do what they need to do hurts the other 99%, as Grant has explained. The other thing that I think is fact-based that's interesting, Grant shared this and he can back this up with research. On average, a citizen, a citizen who isn't homeless generates about four pounds of waste a week, approximately. Homeless is about 50 pounds. I was shocked when that statistic was given to me. And when I asked for the detail, it was explained that we all have receptacles and various things to dispose of that. But when you're homeless, the outside is your receptacle and you also carry with you a lot of your belongings in preparation for anticipating not having things. So a lot more is actually carried by homelessness than maybe you would expect. And so that is going into the river as well. And it's my understanding this ordinance will help protect the river, which I think is another part that doesn't necessarily get brought up. And so I absolutely am against having any type of approach where incarceration is the first step and a misdemeanor is actually the penalty for someone who's homeless. But I can tell you, hours and hours I've spent on this, I am begging y'all who are dedicated in the community to get together and really collectively work with law enforcement to create a model that is leverage-based, solution-based, and actually can create the independent and reporting piece back independent of law enforcement doing it. There's a check and balance that can be put into place, in my opinion, and I'd encourage and call to action would be that to happen. So I, I just really feel that the constitutionality is something that is going to affect the others if that's what ends up happening. But I think to anticipate what that might be is not in the purview of any of us right now because no one has a crystal ball, even though I'm disappointed in Assistant DA Canderas because I thought you had a crystal ball. You don't have a crystal ball. But I do appreciate everybody's passion. I appreciate everybody caring, and I think that's a great place to start from, that we all care. And I really, really am going to be encouraged. Douglas I here is going to help lead this. I hope that Faith in Action comes forward and many of these other groups come forward to coalesce. If you do have a meeting, I'd love to attend and listen and then hopefully see the success of all of this happen and the stories that could be really the success of this. So thank you for the time and thank you for presenting all of this and thank all of you for all you do and care for our community and the most vulnerable population we have. So thank you.
And Commissioner Garcia, we haven't checked in on you. I just want to make sure if you have questions or comments, you have an opportunity.
So many great questions and discussion. First, I'd like to touch on Commissioner Herman's comment about the safe parking options. And last month I reached out to Faith in Action and I'd love to revisit the conversation we had about potentially piloting something like that. But overall, this is super tough. The lack of housing really for me is the main issue here. And we all know and we all agree that more housing is going to be the thing that ultimately ends homelessness in our region. And we all agree that mental health and substance abuse, domestic violence and trauma all need our attention. I talked about that last time we, we looked at this. It needs investment. And so this is tough and it's because we're dealing with these huge systemic issues. But in the time that I've been on the county, I've, I've seen us stepping into these spaces like mental health with the purchase of West Hills, substance abuse with the opioid settlement and housing. I mean, just today, on the agenda today, you'll see mention of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, 120 units of affordable housing, 50 units of supportive housing. And then for those who tuned in last week, we, we voted to make it easier to build ADUs in the county. So those are some of the strides we're making in a bunch of different areas, but we need to keep pushing. And so this is really tough in the sense that you have to weigh all of these different perspectives. And I've had so many conversations. Law enforcement basically is trying to balance the rights and needs of half a million people, whether they're housed or unhoused. The environmentalists reach out and they're focusing on the cleanliness and the protection of our land. Then you got the water purveyors that are focusing on the quality of our drinking water. Outdoor enthusiasts are solely focused on, you know, the health of our plants and animals and access to outdoors. Fire agencies are focused on mitigating the risk of wild wildfires. Health district, you know, focusing on public health concerns and environmental conditions. So in taking that all in, all that input, all that data, I, I just think today I'm going to need a vote in support of what my Sun Valley constituents are telling me that they need. And so for a little bit of context, I mean, Commissioner Herman knows this, our, every single cab meeting in Sun Valley, our constituents talk to us about the, the problems with illegal dumping, abandoned vehicles, graffiti and wildfire concerns. And these are things that are top of mind all the time in the unincorporated part of the county. And over the past year, I've gotten so many phone calls on a variety of issues from north, south, east, west, all over the valley. On the north side, a principal called me last year about an abandoned trailer that you could see from the front door of the school. And after the unhoused, people left the trailer, the students were found inside playing in the trailer. And the principal was super concerned because it just created a very unsafe condition right there in the neighborhood, steps away from the front door. On the west side, I mentioned this last time, I saw an encampment right next to some houses, sagebrush, open space, and it posed a big fire and public health risk to those neighbors. On the south side, and this was prior to my election, a huge encampment was right next to a neighborhood. It blocked access to hiking trails and open space, and it took a ton of resources to clean up. You can actually see the images on the worms. It's not on Google Earth, but our worms map, you can see it even from two years ago. And I believe that encampment got even bigger than what was photographed. Our partners at the Sun Valley GID are seeing recreational vehicles being used as residences throughout the valley. And what they're kind of concerned about is that many folks are illegally hooking up to residential sewer. And it's not only impacting the GID sewer capacity, the other users essentially in the valley are having to subsidize those extra sewer charges. And so the GID is, is wrestling with this as well, and they're currently exploring ideas and solutions. So right now in Sun Valley, residents are definitely looking out for each other. They feel bad about the situation of those who are unhoused, but they also get really upset when situations get out of control. And just last month, I wanted to share, you know, there was accumulating of trash from a motor home on the north side of the valley that got so bad, it started to block the street. And it was eventually being piled up against the fence of a senior citizen. And so I started getting phone calls about that. People were really concerned that, yes, we feel bad, but this shouldn't impact this, this woman who lived there and it was impacting her property. These are just a few examples. I don't want to belabor the point, but it's happening in my district. And, you know, when this agenda packet dropped last week, I immediately started scouring for where is it, where's the language in it that shows the multi-step process outlined? And I saw it in section 425 dot seven. And I think that section for me will really help some of those situations that are more severe. Number one, with the warning. Number two, with the written warning. Three, trying to connect the individual with the case manager. And four, formal citation in community court. We don't want to get to the highest level of enforcement, but in some cases, you know, if we want to empower our, our Hope unit to make that decision if it's needed as a last resort. And so, you know, to kind of just summarize everything, this decision's super tough. But at the end of the day, I, I believe I need to support the needs and the rights of the children, parents, seniors and small businesses in the unincorporated part of Sun Valley. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. I see Commissioner Clark has signed in.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Garcia brought up some very good points. I think Commissioner Androla brought up some very good points. Again, I'm concerned about going this way before we utilize everything that we've got in our toolbox. And again, I had some other thoughts, but I got thinking about something else when, when listening to her. So again, I'm going to be opposed to it at this point in time until we get some further clarification. That's just where I'm going to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. I, when this came to the board in December of 2022, I did not vote in support to open this chapter. I had some serious concerns. It has been a long learning process for me in between then and a lot of, I've, I've had to do a lot of thinking. I want to support Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Andriola's concerns about their district, but I also, I have such a difficult, I have, I have such difficulty with what the ordinance is. And I think, I think that the one thing that, you know, is great about this job is that nothing is written in stone, nothing has to be done today and done for decades to come. We can see if the Hopes team and the sheriff's office can use this ordinance to support people. I like the idea of regular check-ins. I absolutely want it to come back to us in a year to consider any changes that we want to make to it or if we want to keep it. Because I think that the public commenters discussing, okay, well, if you've only had five arrests in Sparks and zero in Reno, what is this ordinance? And so I think that is a question for me too. But we're being told by our staff that this is something that they need and that we can regularly check back in on. I think that Reverend Novak is absolutely correct. We need a third party to audit this, probably for the other two jurisdictions, but I don't have oversight over them. But I think it would be good to see, but, and what that would look like. I know that we have UNR students that potentially even could help with this. But I'm, I'm leaning towards supporting this to support the concerns of my fellow commissioners and the, and the struggles that they're having with their districts. And I think that there may be an opportunity to look at this again and bring it back. I absolutely want it to come back in March of 2025. And, and I'd like to see the data and the discussion in the quarterly reports. Commissioner Commissioner Clark.
Thank you. Back on track. Now, I've got a friend over in the Bay Area, Catholic church, and they allow parking in their parking lot at night. And I'm just looking at the big facility the county has here, the big giant parking lot that, other than the rodeo, a lot of times stays vacant the whole year. I'm wondering if we could maybe have something where people can sleep in their cars out there, maybe have some porta potties and showers. I know when we had the floods out in Lemon Valley, we brought in some portable shower buildings and stuff. So, I think there's ways to take some of the stress off of, you know, people that are living in a tent, that's one thing. But some people working poor still might have a car that's licensed and operational. You know, if we could open the parking lot here in the evenings from, you know, 5:00 or 6:00 at night till 8:00 in the morning or 7:00 in the morning and have some facilities so people could park with operational, licensed, insured vehicles, it's something we could look at. We've got a big open space right walking distance from this room. And that might take some pressure off of things. And also, restrooms are a big issue. I mean, you know, if you're living outside and you don't have a restroom and you have to go, you've got two choices, you know? And one is do something outside and the other is a lot less likely to happen. But, you know, porta potties around in certain places. I mean, can the county buy these? Can we lease these? I know we can lease them and I know it's very expensive, but, you know, maybe we could partner with some of the companies that do that and do some PR exchange and kind and make sure they get emptied on a regular basis. I mean, you know, Burning Man gets by with 70,000 or 80,000 people in porta potties. So, they don't exactly clean those all the time. If you're out there, you'll know that. But we could have porta potties that are clean on a daily basis and maybe partner with waste management with some of the small, not the big giant dumpsters and place those around in strategic locations. And again, let them do some PR with that. Good neighbors that they are helping us and not charging us a full price. I'm not asking anybody to work for free or do anything for free, but if we could get some partners in the community with restrooms and dumpsters, that would be a big help. I mean, the issue for most people is polluting the river. That's trash. Polluting the river with human body waste. You know, we can kind of tamp that down a little bit if we did something besides just arrest people if they go to the bathroom outside. So, those are just some other thoughts that might help and just move the needle a little bit towards the positive. So, just some thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board comments?
Chair Hill, may I?
Chair Hill?
Yes, Commissioner Garcia.
Sorry, I raised my hand. I wasn't sure if you saw it. I agree with Commissioner Clark and also with Commissioner Herman. I already met with staff, like I mentioned earlier, regarding potentially piloting a safe parking option. I think vehicular homelessness is an area, it's really a gap in services in our region. And I think that the county, in partnership with their faith-based community, could really help make some positive strides in that area. So, I would love for staff to continue researching that and to bring forward some potential ideas on and exploration for us to go forward with that, if possible.
Great. Any other commissioners have comments? And yes, did you have something for us?
Chair Hill, I just wanted to clarify something for the record, if you indulge me for a second, specific to Commissioner Clark, Corey Solfrino, for the record. Donald Black writes an amazing article that you read in graduate school or law school that talks about the mobilization of crime and how crime is reported, on whether or not it's victims that are reporting crime and/or they're happening in the presence of law enforcement. The only other mechanism that we have out there without those two things present is surveys, is national crime information surveys. So, that's why victim advocacy is so important. I don't want it to sound like the Sheriff's Office is not investigating crimes. Lieutenant Daniels' story was more or less anecdotal to talk about the atrocities that are happening in some of these encampments. And unfortunately, what we have is some victims that will not come forward. So, when we hear about it word of mouth, when we hear about it through the ER, when we hear about it through the community members, but we don't have a cooperating victim that can give us information based upon who that individual was, that was the assaulter, that was the attacker, that's the gross reality of what we deal with on a daily basis. But we absolutely investigate those crimes. Sometimes our hands are tied based upon victims not cooperating and then just the unfortunate, no other independent cooperating information for us to be able to tie those victims and suspects to crimes in time and place.
Thank you. I wasn't indicating at all that you weren't. I'm just using, I was just trying to figure out how sleeping in your car and being homeless that this ordinance being in place would have helped that situation at all. Trying to tie those two things together is what I was trying to do. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair Hill.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Well, the ordinance, just as a reminder, is 1715. I am looking for some sort of motion today.
Madam Chair, I'll move to adopt ordinance 1715, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code Chapter 50 and Chapter 70 by adding new sections regarding camping on county-owned properties on public places within 1,000 feet of the Trekkie River, use of fire, blow torches and/or propane tanks, parking of oversized vehicles on county-owned properties or public places, obstructive uses of public sidewalks, roads and/or highways, prohibited ride solicitation and contribution from driver occupant of vehicle prohibited, human habitation of vehicles on county-owned properties or places, and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining to, as presented. Thanks.
All right. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. With the motion and a second, any questions from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes three to two. Thank you, everyone, for all your passion in coming out on this very difficult public hearing. Next item is item 12. Mr. Manager.
Item 12 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
First step, we have Aspen Maria, followed by Janet Butcher.
Okay. My name is Aspen and I'm up here again. So, I, this is really disappointing, but I do want to talk about some things that were mentioned. The trash statistics about homeless people having 50 pounds of trash. I would like to see the details on that statistics because it sounds like you're counting their tent, their belongings and their things as trash versus just actual... Okay. That's true. It's not quorum right now, but whatever. The other thing I want to mention is that I was working with a gentleman last week who had just got out of serving 15 years in prison down in Clark County. And he was released to the CARES campus. And so, I want to know why that is happening, why our Department of Corrections is able to release people to a CARES campus in a county other than the county that they served in. Not saying that people being released from jail should not have a place to go, but it makes it harder for us to house people and get people into shelter that are residents of Washoe County if we are also allowing the Department of Corrections to release people to our homeless shelter right off the bat. And then, I want to make a comment about the CERT or the collaboration with the public that keeps coming up, that we should volunteer to do these things. I have a full-time job that I have to take time off to be here. I have several other, the person that sat with me earlier, she is a teacher. She had to find a sub and take one of her personal days to be here. We cannot be responsible for this. This is the responsibility of the cities and the county. Faith in Action has done a lot of work and I do applaud and commend their work, but even the Reno Posse that feeds people on Wednesday, they are not equipped to convince people to get into resources. They're not equipped to bring people to resources. I don't think that's a fair suggestion to put it back on the public. And lastly, to the comment that was made earlier about, oh, I just want to say that also, in that conversation with Grant Denton, he took several stints in jail and prison before he got clean. And so, I just, if we're using that as an example, we have to, are we going to expect people to go through the system five, six, seven times before they are able to get into resources? And I'll just end with, on the comment about this, to bring people to the resources, since when do we consider jail as a public resource? Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Chastity Martinez.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into the minutes verbatim. Somebody made fun of me for saying that every time, but I want to talk about the elections. You didn't think we'd get away without talking about those today. So, the Worms and the Scope creep. I asked about this at the Spanish Springs cab meeting last winter. The original date was 2026 to be implemented. When I asked about the Scope creep, I had no idea that the date had originally been set for 2026. You can't take something, you can't take 10 pounds and put it in a five-pound bag. And you can't take a project that was originally slated as taking a certain amount of time and squeeze it into a shorter amount of time. I had that happen to me one time where, when I was managing a project and they said, well, we really want to implement in May and not October. And guess when we implemented? I don't understand why the Clark County, the Washoe County, ROV and the 15 other counties don't demand that this VREM, whatever it's called, be postponed until the original date of 2026, which, by the way, is a non-presidential election year. We already have a very contentious problem with our elections. And so, why we're trying to push this in a year that is horrible? I have a feeling it's because of the elections group which was hired to be brought in here and run our elections, along with, I think it was a roast strategy or something like that. So, I really think that we need to talk about Commissioner Herman's resolutions. We need paper ballots and hand count. It's the only way, because those machines can be manipulated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chastity Martinez, followed by Matthew Wilke.
Hi, I'm Chastity Martinez with Faith in Action Nevada, for the record. Just want to say that we're disappointed with the outcome of this, passing of this camping ordinance. We thank you for the consideration of our many comments and adding the piece about accountability. And I would encourage that upon the outcome of the Supreme Court grants pass First Johnson case, that you would consider next steps if that does get passed for what that would mean for this ordinance. We are committed to continuing to work together with the county, with community members, both impacted, you know, by this type of policy, as well as the faith communities, to address the root causes of housing insecurity and advocate for the funding of such solutions like we see with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I wanted to just mention that I think it was interesting, almost exactly five years ago, or maybe exactly, March 26, 2019, the county commission approved passing the Washoe County Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I remember being in the room, in the back of the room on that day, to stand with my community members to support that, which is why, you know, it's important for me to have people stand today in opposition to this ordinance that we believe would be a backwards approach and backwards to what we passed here five years ago. So, we continue to support the affordable housing solutions and are happy, encouraged to see some of that moving forward, but just think that this ordinance is not the right move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Wilke, followed by Jackie Riley.
Good, almost early evening, Commissioner Hill and other commissioners. My name's Matthew Wilke, for the record. Severely disappointed in that vote and how that went down. Things I want to bring up, on the county's website, it does bring up that you guys have the Housing First, Zero Initiative Housing First campaign. I would recommend and request that you remove that from your county's website, since this ordinance goes directly against that or that whole premise of Housing First. So, I think it would be misnomer to have that representative on your website while also passing these types of ordinances. I'm so severely shocked. One also thing, I also did meet with Grant Denton as well. I brought up in a meeting, I was here previously, I met with him before coming here. Something we also brought up is you cannot force people into recovery. You cannot bring a active crackhead to a rehab and say, get better, here you go, now go to jail. That's what this is doing. You are telling people you are going to have to go to these resources, which many of them have tried. My friend now, I'm going to have to reach out to her, who lives in her car, who sleeps with her dog in Washoe County, I don't know what she's going to do. She has a full-time job. She sleeps in her car. She's been to CARES campus. It's not the jam. She's been assaulted. She, I worry about her. So, she's the person I'm thinking about with the passing of this ordinance and I'm, I figured it would be a three to two vote, but this is not the three to two vote I foresaw. And thanks.
Thank you.
Jackie Riley, followed by Pam Gormley.
Jackie Riley, I want to say thank you to Herman and Clark for your votes. I can't even believe this. I'm so disappointed. We criminalize people for being poor. It's like back in London when they used to throw people in jail for not having enough money for bills that they owed and stuff. I'm just really, really disappointed. I wish you had voted the other way and gone back in a year from now and looked to see if things would change instead of making it, I think going backwards. You know, you've talked about going, looking at it a year from now. Why couldn't you have voted against it and look at it a year from now and see if things could be done differently? Just really disappointed. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Pam Gormley, followed by Simona Visani.
Pam Gormley, I cannot believe it. I've been a proud Democrat all my adult life. I was born a Democrat. I am not a proud Democrat today. I cannot believe what safety nets really are there. You're facing 2,000 people who are homeless. There is not that big a safety net in this county. And I am so disappointed. I'm sorry, I cannot become a Republican, but thank you, thank you. And Alexis Hill, I have left a voice message for you. I have texted you. I knew how you were going to vote because I, as a constituent of Ward One, have reached out to you many times and you never responded to me. So, I knew what I was up against today. But thank you for the people with a heart and a mind and a caring soul. Thank you.
Simona Visani.
I too am very disappointed about your decision. I ask God to please enlighten you and change your mind, but the only person that is really on the same wavelength as me is Commissioner Clark. I really appreciate your decision and I really hope that all the other commissioners will follow you in your plans as fast as possible because I cannot afford to have my friends in jail for not having a home to live in. So, again, I will pray God and I hope that in a year, you definitely change your mind or, I don't know, but you can build up very fast resources to place my friends in a safe... or, I don't know, but you can build up very fast resources to place my friends in a safe environment according to their resources.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you've already come up and spoke. Mr. Manager, we're now moving on to item 13.
Item 13 is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman.
Yes, Madam Chair. I do have four future items. I would like and like to encourage you to give the board members a chance to choose to hear the election integrity resolution. And hopefully eliminate the possibility of a non-transparent style magic show election. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Manager Brown, did you have anything for us?
No, no, Manager.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got some requests for future agenda items. I've brought it up more than once and I heard a lady out here this afternoon speaking about how she and her friend had to take time off work to be here and juggle their schedules around. And I, again, like to see it on the agenda in the near future, a vote to see if we can have one night meeting a quarter or one night meeting a month and figure out how we can involve the citizens of the county who are stuck at work during business hours. Next, I want to talk about the dog shooting at the park. Lady brought that up, one of the first public commenters. I can't imagine driving through our county, stopping, if you live in Elko, stopping to exercise your dog in our park and taking your dead dog body home. This is unbelievable. And I walk my dog in that park, I walk my dog a lot of places. Do I need to start carrying a gun to defend myself in case somebody, somebody's dog that isn't on, what I've read in the paper, the dog that was off the leash attacked the dog that was on the leash, the people who had the dog on the leash, their dog got killed. Are we going to get Wild West about, get real Western about walking our dogs? If somebody's dog snarls at somebody else, are we going to have a duel about that? We need to get to the bottom of this and find out what's going on. You know, lots of people are animal lovers, lots of people are dog lovers. Can't imagine taking my dog for a walk and having that happen. CARES campus, people are complaining, again, I keep hearing it on a regular basis about not feeling safe there. So if you don't feel safe at the CARES campus, how can we force people to go to the CARES campus? So again, I'd like to have an independent inquiry and find out who the ringleaders are and who's, who might be causing problems. I'm not so naive to think that wardens run prisons, the prisoners run the prisons, the gangs, the cliques, the groups in prison. So it probably is the same, same dynamic out on the street, the survival of the fittest, somebody preys on the people who are weaker. We need to look into that and find out how to stop that, if that's the problem. If somebody's getting beat up and their dog's getting stabbed. We need, we need more information about this and we need to put a stop to it and find out who the heck the ringleaders are, the shot callers, the gang leaders out on the streets that are preying on their own kind, the homeless people. Because it would just be a matter of time before they're preying on people that aren't unhoused. So we need to get a handle on that. And I'm pro-law enforcement, don't think my vote here today was anti-law enforcement. Somebody's doing something wrong, arrest them. Do whatever you need to do, prosecute them. But the stuff of having, to defend yourself out there, I know it's, life is a self-survival situation, you've got to, you've got to think about yourself, but if you're out walking your dog and your dog gets killed, what's that, what's happening with our society? So those are my thoughts. Also, I'd like to see the, on the agenda item, us emulating the Nye County voting rules. I talked to Nate Edwards about this, we talked about it our last meeting. I'd like to see that on the, on the agenda to vote on it. And it could probably go a three-two vote, as many of my suggestions might go, but that'll be that, at least be on the record. So I'm asking for these things to be on the agenda so we can vote on them and then the public can understand where their commissioners lie on these issues. Thank you.
Commissioner Andrela.
I actually wanted to follow up on the public comments, so I'm not trying to, you know, have a walk-in quorum here, but there were codes that were specifically cited in the county code that the public commenter included, and I'm hoping that we can follow up. I know that the county manager and the staff do a great job when there are opportunities to actually follow up with whatever those suggestions are, but it seemed that the citation of those Washoe County codes indicated, as presented by the public speaker, room for review. And in terms specifically of the dog shooting, I better put that into context of which public speaker that I'm referring to. So I'm hoping that we can have staff follow up and we can look at that. The other item I wanted to just follow up with, and I had brought it up several meetings ago, was looking at having an emulation of a side-by-side, and I spoke with the county manager and the ROV about having, you know, paper ballots and hand counting and really do a simulation against the machines and really kind of have a opportunity to look at that framework. I have spent a lot of time speaking with the clerk in Nye County that will soon be vacating that position on April 1. And I also spoke and had a follow-up conversation with Elko County and what they're doing, and I think it is worth looking at what those provisions are. I know Elko County is going to be having an audit and a study done about paper ballots, hand counting, and what that would look like as it pertains directly to the regulations. Because the regulations, as they're written right now, prevent some things from happening. I'm not going to get into it right this second, but I think it would be great to have a true opportunity to bring the public and actually have an equal representation of parties and really simulate that and test that. And I'm hoping that that can be done. And I know that there's a lot going on and I know that time is, you know, the sand's running out of the hourglass pretty quickly, but I think it's an opportunity to build trust because some of the changes are statutorily in place. And so there's some provisions that may, people may not be aware of that I think may not afford a true hand count, paper count as it may appear. And again, I've done a lot of homework on this, so I am point blank, to cut to the chase, asking if we can do an emulation of that and include the public in that as well. So, thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
Nothing from me, Madam Chair.
Okay. With that, it sounds like also, I think the manager heard this loud and clear, but looking into a safe camp for CARES campus and showing us that that's even in the realm of partnership and future budgeting, looking forward to that discussion. But thank you, everyone, for today's meeting and have a wonderful evening. We are adjourned.